So we've not been allowed, honestly. It was supposed to be a contest.
Well, it's mostly been a little one, a little one that requires some type of program. I'm sure you've seen the videos. Maybe it's because of that, I'm involved in them. Even if I'm busy, you're probably going through that and changing stuff. It's up for our middle school, so you have seven, eight years, you don't have a whole year. That's different for the spot of the staff just here. Thanks for having us.
I'm glad I can just go back and just with the kids, they do that. Yeah.
I'll leave right now. All right. Yeah. Most of that good person. Yeah. Well, maybe not soon. Yeah. Be careful.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to call the Hermiston City Council and work session for order. I guess we don't need to clarify before.
No.
We're here tonight to speak about Hermiston Parks and Recreation budget.
That's right. We're moving on with the plan. Mr. Arts, his turn. You will come.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you for having me here today. And I am excited to be able to kind of go over our department and talk about operations and revenue and everything that we do within the department and all the things that we have going on. So I was able to send you guys slides before. I wanted you to have those because there's a lot of numbers, a lot of information on there. I'm going to go rather quickly through most of these slides as best as I can, just to get through everything and be able to show what we do. So Parks and Recreation, I feel that Parks and Rec is the front door to our community. When people come in to our town, they see our parks, they see the state of what we are able to have as far as amenities, and it's a big deal for people to see, you know, livability, economic development through our parks. Our mission is to provide to our community parks, activities, and events, a place to foster human development, strengthen community image in a sense of place, promote health and wellness, protect environmental resources, and support economic development. And each of our areas that we oversee within the Parks and Recreation Department adds to this value within the city. It is also want to note that people are good to kind of point out what we don't have and what they want to see, and we are always taking that into account and working towards improving our parks system, improving our recreation department to be able to add some of those things as well. Another big portion of what we do is we are kind of the face of the branding that we have for our city. So our logo under our department, whenever we're working, our part-time staff, we're wearing that brand, we're wearing it proudly and trying to promote that to individuals so that there's more of a community sense of pride, and that goes a long ways in our department. This next slide is our 2022 year in review. It kind of summarizes everything that we did in 2022 as far as representing our parks. So 20 parks and open spaces, 153-plus acres, we'll get a little more into that, walking trails. But a lot of what we wanted to express in this review is the number of people that we serve. You can see there's 72,000 aquatic center visits. That's 72,000-plus people walking through the threshold of that aquatic center, whether it's, you know, swim lessons, you know, public swim, people coming in and out, swim teams, that's a lot of bodies that are going through, that's a lot of bodies that are using the facilities, turning on faucets, using restrooms, showers, and of course getting in the pool and swimming and recreating. We also offer 156-plus programs and classes and events, a broad range of them to our community members, and our staff has gone a long ways and constantly thinks of new activities and events, and we're constantly working to be able to provide those and seeing the trends that go out throughout the nation and making sure that we're on top of those and providing those for the community. And you can see there the number of participants that we serve and have registered in our programs since COVID, those numbers have significantly gone up, and we'll touch on that a little bit here. So this is our service area. A small circle there designates the 20-mile radius. That's about 43,000 in population, and that's where we see the majority of the patrons that come in, use our services as far as recreation programs, the pool, things like that. The blue circle there, that's, it kind of stretches and encompasses the tri-cities. We see a lot of Washington points in the Aquatic Center parking lot, which is awesome. They see us as the regional pool, outdoor pool to go to, and we serve quite a few of them, and we're, you know, we're happy to have them, happy to have them over here because it drives the economic stability of our town. When they come to the pool, they probably stop by a restaurant or, you know, they fill up on gas if they have to because gas is almost a dollar more expensive than in Washington. So they're coming here, they're getting, you know, goods and services with no tax, and so they're coming down here, they're probably spending more money in our restaurants and our businesses, and we love to see that. So as far as our programs are concerned, that red number up there, Hermiston, we have about 81% of our participants come from Hermiston or have a Hermiston address. The green there is everybody outside of Hermiston, so 68% of those outside of Hermiston come from Umatilla, and you can see down the line there. So and then those dots there, that represents people from all over the place that have registered for a program in the last two years, and you can see we cover the entire Northwest region here.
Ralph, can I ask a question?
Yes, feel free, I was just going to say, feel free to ask questions as we go along here.
I'm confused by the green. I understand 81% of the people that we service aren't from Hermiston.
So only 19% that we don't service, that's the percentage of where they're coming from?
Yeah, but the numbers don't add up to 100, right? So 68% from Umatilla, 31% from Stanfield, that's 99% right there.
There's a lot of one-offs that come from other areas. Correct. So they, not all is encapsulated in those numbers there. So we have some from Kennewick, Pasco, Richland that aren't represented. I wanted to represent the biggest numbers through our smaller region here.
Still confused. So I'm just trying to figure out of the 19%, what percentage actually came from Umatilla, Stanfield, or where?
That's the 68%. So of the 19%, 68% of those came from Umatilla.
Right, but if you add up all those greens, what are you saying? It goes more than 100, so somewhere the math just didn't, so we'll come back.
Yeah.
Get that back.
Correct.
Because you've got 99, then you've got 108, and then another 120.
Sorry, I'm worrying about those figures.
Yeah.
Misrepresented.
But it's good to see the large percentage.
Yeah.
Close by.
Coming by. Because of your conversation that we have internally, you know, as the council looks at how we can be good partners with our regional neighbors and what percentage of those partners would actually use a facility like the ones we're putting in.
Right. So I'm going to go a little bit into our staffing model and our org chart here. We'll talk about a little bit about the positions and what they do. First of all, we have a very dynamic staff. Each of these individuals is a professional and handles more than what their job description actually says, and they go a long way to make sure that our department and the city is represented well. Obviously, myself, director, Jason Bearman is our Parks Manager. On the other side, in past history, we had our Recreation Manager, that's where I was before. Through the changes in directorship and the state of where hiring and things were during COVID, we chose not to fill that position but hire a Recreation Coordinator, and that's down Recreation Coordinator One, which is open and frozen at this point. And then we have Facility Leads, they're on the top left, our General Clerical, that handles all of our marketing and great stuff, and the front desk stuff with Kelly. Recreation Coordinators, Kasia and Diana. Kasia oversees the Aquatic Department, Diana oversees the Community Center, and then they both oversee part-time staff. Want to mention Recreation is not 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Recreation goes outside of those times. Our Aquatic Center starts at 5:00 in the morning and goes until sometimes 11, 12:00 at night. And as I said before, our staff, they're so dynamic, they take pride in what they do, and they're constantly thinking about what's going on outside of those hours and what's going on with programs, what's going on in the parks. And so I'm very proud of what they are able to accomplish with the limited amount of staffing that they have and being able to work together with it.
Tell us about what kind of an impact the lack of the Recreation Coordinator One was having on.
I was going to kind of get into that later, but just briefly, without that position, we don't have somebody full-time overseeing our special events. Our team programs doesn't have a coordinator. They are also an aquatic, Assistant Aquatic Center Manager, and so as I get into those numbers of open hours, you'll see that there's a big void there. Financially with revenue, potential loss of $30,000 to $40,000 with those programs that they oversee. The other, our other coordinators, Kasia and Diana, have absorbed a lot of what that coordinator position does, but it's taken a toll, and we have already planned out the year for what we're doing before that position was frozen, so we're looking, we have cut back on some programs and are looking, as we keep going through this, to slim down and trim down what we are able to offer because we don't have that, those extra hours with the full-time staff person there.
I have a question too. Where does Al Fetter go as EOTech? So we've been treating EOTech as a separate department. They work closely with Parks and Rec, and you'll see later in Brandon's presentation where, you know, they have been sharing programs and, you know, Parks and Rec's been offering programs at EOTech, so, but right now we've been treating it as a separate department.
So they, who's their, like, superior, I guess? Who's?
Al reports to me.
He reports directly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So start with staff. Director position, plans, organizes, staffs directs, and coordinates the operation activities of the Parks and Recreation Department for the city, oversees the budget, all of the employees, you know, the management of the annual budget, and forward thinking to the future of Parks Department amenities that we can create and have within the parks, and then oversees all those areas of responsibility, parks, the Recreation Department, Park and Rider, Aquatic Center, Community Center, and then a lot of collaboration with other city departments, organizations, stakeholders. There's a lot of that because there's a lot of good organizations, good people in this community that want to contribute and take part in what the city has to offer as far as parks and amenities. So I'll go to our Parks Department. I love this model here, Parks Make Life Better. That's from the National Parks and Rec Association. It can be more true. If we didn't have great parks, people would be looking to go elsewhere to recreate, to be outside, to do their healthy, active living. And with our staff and what we have going for us here, we have immensely great parks with Funland, with Riverfront Park, the Oxbow Trail. So the department, they oversee our parks and playgrounds, the open spaces, our trails, special amenities like the splash pad, our sports fields, and so they oversee all those. They mow, they take care of it, they're constantly looking over it with hazards and irrigation. A lot goes into each of these open spaces. They also do quite.
Just, would you mind clarifying what an open space is in comparison to the other four here that you listed?
Yeah, so parks are, you know, the typical riverfront park, Mackenzie Park, places with a status parks. Open spaces are like the desert disc golf space or other spaces that the city kind of holds ownership over, but it's not developed into a specific park. And so that's kind of an open space where, you know, Oxbow, the entire Oxbow property is an open space, it's not developed fully, but it is there to recreate on and to use.
Thank you.
That makes sense. So the Parks Department does maintenance around the parks, around these areas, irrigation are, they're very dynamic and can do major construction projects. Jason Barrett, our Parks Manager, Brian Fricki basically built Funland, the two of them, so they can take on those projects. They're building a park shelter right now. A lot of the good things that you see out of there, that comes from those guys, special event setups, preserving the spaces with weed and pest management, mowing down those places so that people are able to use it or they don't get out of hand. And then, you know, kind of recently, but overall is the vandalism cleanup. They do, they have spent a lot of time taking care of those and making sure that those spaces are cleaned up after people move out of there and they are able to get in there and clean it up for those who don't.
Do you know how much, has the cost of the vandalism cleanup increased over the years?
It has, with the homeless population and the tents that have gone up. It's a constant cleanup effort, about an hour to two hours per park a day of extra work cleaning up and garbage mitigation. So staff costs, with staff costs going up, the cost of cleaning those up has gone up.
And Brandon, on the facilities maintenance, did you guys take over EOTech on maintenance up there?
We are currently sharing that responsibility. We have coordinated a schedule to run out the big gun, wiring, and then mowing, so it's a shared schedule between EOTech staff and the park staff. Which, you know, having them onboard and online within the city has been a tremendous help, being able to manage that. Taking on 16 new acres of mowing isn't a small task, so it's been great. So here's kind of our, our parks amenities and just, sorry, can't think of the word right now, but here they all are. We have about 161 acres of park acreage. I'd say 11-plus miles of trails, the smaller trails that do exist throughout the community adds up to over 12 miles. Some of the undeveloped areas there, Steelhead Park included, and then the landscape areas, the Safety Center, Airport Entry Sign, we have a lease with Avenue to have a trail going through there, so we take care of some of that acreage. Recycled Water Center, we mow and take care of the green space there. Parking lots, some ditches, the Railroad Museum, those, that acreage all adds up. And so about 184 acres that we manage, 42 different sites, nine playgrounds, seven restrooms, eight picnic shelters, and all this with about nine different individuals. We have three full-time and then about six part-time guys through the growing season. And I'll get into that a little bit when we get to our seasonal, but for us to mow and trim, it takes about four seasonal guys, about 32 hours a week to get through the mowing and the trimming throughout all the parks. That does not include our open spaces like the disc golf area that we take the big brush hog and go through there, that's about once every couple weeks. When it gets high, then we've got to take another individual to go out there and do that, so quite a bit of time mowing and taking care of the parks, but the staff does a great job, and they look, they look nice and, nice and green. A future park acreage within the next two years includes Simron with a new development going down in there, about 8.63 acres and about a half-mile trails, and then potentially Doran Park next to the UEC substation there off of Elm. So those may be coming online within the next two years. And then also with the future hayfields development, some more park acreage out there as that gets developed.
I have a question.
Yeah?
I want to ask about the disc golf course. Is that being used or is anything happening with it right now?
It does get used, yes. There's, we get emails about it all the time that it's too high, so people are using it. We have some avid disc golfers that are out there. I wouldn't say it's being used every single day, but there are people out there that use it and take advantage of that amenity.
Another question with that. Have you ever looked into like tournaments that could be brought here, termisten, to where it could be used?
Yes, we have. We've looked at leagues and tournaments and those things, it just takes a person to be able to, a staff person to be able to manage it, get it together, and right now we're kind of at capacity to be able to do some of those other events and activities. There's, we get emails about it all the time that it's too high. So people are using, using it. We have some avid disc golfers that are out there. I wouldn't say it's being used every single day, but there are people out there that use it and take advantage of that amenity.
Another question with that. Have you ever looked into like tournaments that could be brought here, terms then, to where it could be used?
Yes, we have. We've looked at leagues and tournaments and those things. It just takes a person to be able to, a staff person to be able to manage it, get it together. And right now we're kind of at capacity to be able to do some of those other events and activities. But in the future, we'd love to be able to offer that. And, you know, it takes a person to come in and say, hey, I want to do this and we'll jump onboard with them. But right now, to be able to handle that, we just don't have the capacity with our staff.
Thank you. More of a statement to go along with Councilman Lynn's question. At Disc Golf Park, I, to be honest, in my seven years here, I've never seen anyone on it. And at the same time, that doesn't mean that nobody uses it. However, after speaking with a few community members, I, I don't really see a lot of utilization there. Not to say that it's a bad idea, but at the same time, I think it'd be better for your staff's time to be utilized maybe elsewhere if, or I guess with other programs that aren't just being utilized as much. So I would recommend that, like I said, in my own personal, I guess anecdotal evidence, I haven't really seen a lot of people out there. So that was more of my statement, but I do have a question regarding drinking fountains. How many drinking fountains do you have at these parks? Do you know how many drinking fountains there are?
I don't have a count on the number of drinking fountains.
Do you know if every park has a drinking fountain?
Not every park does. Typically those with playgrounds usually do. I don't have a count of those.
I've also heard comments from community members, maybe not visiting parks because there's just not a reason long enough to stay. Maybe if you bring a kit along for one of the playgrounds, of course, but I've heard adults wanting to walk to other things like that. And if there's not those type of amenities available, then it just doesn't bring people often as much as you'd probably like.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah. How much time does your staff devote to that disc golf?
Like I said, probably once a month we do devote.
It could be much, yeah.
Yeah. And it takes two, three hours to mow all that. It's not city property, it's a lease with the hospital. And so it's an amenity that we have, people use it and it's there. And it doesn't take a whole lot of staff time to have it. But again, it's another offering that we do have within the park system.
It's also my understanding, and I'm trying to remember this from the dedication of the park, but the plan is, per their presentation, was that they may decide at the hospital to take it back when they decide they need to expand or build upon there. So it's, it's not like it's a permanent installation here either.
Permanent until they say, take it out. Yeah, which it's minimal. There's concrete bags to throw off of and then there's disc golf cages that they catch those on, so.
I guess my comment, my point is, I understand that there's, I'm looking through some of these parks and some of these amenities, there's just things that aren't as utilized as we would like it to be. And it's great that we have assets here, but I think more for the time that your department spends on certain programs or maybe certain upkeeps, it's just more for that. That's just more of the statement that I feel like we should be working on other things rather than, and that's just one example. But I'm sure we could maybe look or survey through some of these programs that we have because dedicating some staff time to a program, it's important if the program's going to survive. But if there's not a lot of interest in that program, then it's probably best to dedicate staff time elsewhere.
To do that would be to, you know, dissolve that lease agreement with the hospital and then allow them to take it over. Because all we're doing is mowing on it and so we're keeping that trimmed down for, for the hospital. And so I do understand what you're saying. So, yeah, we can look at that in the future.
I just wanted to let you know that Greenwood Park does not have a water fountain.
Does not. So park staff, our park manager, he, under the direction of the director, plans, organizes and controls all park maintenance projects. He oversees the full-time and the part-time seasonal positions, schedules, all the maintenance, the mowing, also does a lot of the construction projects. Jason Barrett is the one, is the individual in that position and he does a great job as far as taking care of the staff, taking care of the parks, making sure that, that they're seeing the attention that they need. He's also our chemical sprayer, he's a licensed sprayer, so he does a lot of that down in Oxbow in those open spaces and areas and trails to take care of that. One of our park facility leads is also involved with our aquatics. So a lot of his time is at the Aquatics Center, making sure that the pool maintenance and pools operating on the, kind of the infrastructure side, has a lot of knowledge of pumps and chemicals and he makes sure that the pool's operating. He's usually there in the mornings to vacuum, make sure things are running smoothly beforehand and get over to our supervisors for the day. Any type of callouts that, that would be with issues with the pool, he's usually there to help mitigate with that. On the other side of the parks, he's also a certified playground inspector. He inspects our playgrounds, makes sure they're out of code. That playground certification has gotten a lot harder over the years to make sure that all the parks are within the standards that are set by the industry and that our playgrounds are safe. So what you see, you know, when things are not operational, we put up, you know, fencing around it to make sure that nobody goes in there and they're safe when we're able to get to it and get the maintenance done on it. He also does quite a bit of construction projects, concrete work around the parks. Like I said, we're building a shelter at the Dock Park and he's heavily involved in the construction with that and concrete. Our other park facility lead is our irrigation specialist, making sure that all our irrigation is, is working. There's a lot of sprinklers, a lot of pipe that goes through each of those parks. And so he's on top of that, making sure that those are all functioning well, not spraying into other people's homes or into areas that aren't, or making sure that they're doing their job when we don't see them at night, because that's usually when they're going. And he does a great job with that, making sure those areas are taken care of. Rupert Garcia is the individual in that position and he is also our Spanish liaison. He helps with our, our parks seasonal staff, helps communicate with park users that are Spanish-speaking and so a great asset for us. And then our seasonal park team members. These, we have two nine-month seasonal positions, four six-month seasonal positions, and they come on during the growing season, season, usually April through September. They help with the mowing, the trimming, all the extra side work to make our parks look presentable and they prepare for rentals, they clean up restrooms and facilities and do that, that dirty work for, for the parks. They do a great job and it's kind of a transitional seasonal position, so we don't always get the same people back. But with our experienced full-time crew, the training is pretty quick and they can get in and make sure that they're on task to, to take care of the parks the way they're supposed to and make them look good. Moving on to our Recreation Department. This is another NRPA kind of motto here, Parks and Recreation, confident, passionate, strong, essential. The staff that we have in this department are, they're so dynamic, they can do one of everything. They can, they can program events, they take care of guest, guest relations, they're marketers, they're salespeople, they go out and sell their programs, they're event planners, they're software engineers sometimes, you know, they do quite a bit. And overseeing our youth sports, adult sports, aquatics, facility rentals, special events. They have, have a hand in all of these recreation programs and activities that we put out to the community. And just, just brief job duties here, the assistant in planning and the budget. This is pool manager, Casia Robbins, Recreation Coordinator, develops youth sports and special events, manages all the operations at the Aquatics Center. A big part, a major part of her job is managing the 100-plus part-time seasonal employees that, that we have at the Aquatics Center, youth sports and special events. And like I said, Recreation is not 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The pool runs after hours. Programs like youth sports run after hours on the weekends. And both Casia and Diana, our coordinators, are thinking about these programs all the time. Is everybody safe? Is everybody going home? Is all the equipment there? Is the part-time staff doing what they're supposed to do? Are they showing up? Are the volunteers treating our kids well in these programs? That's the mental load that, that these coordinators take home with them every night because they are a phone call away from running and putting out a fire at the parks or the program and making sure that things are running smoothly. So it's, it's a big job with all the programs that we have to offer. And again, very dynamic staff and I'm grateful to have them and to have them under control and making sure that everything is safe. Facility manager, Recreation Coordinator, this is Phil by Diana Picard. She oversees the Community Center, adult sports programs, special events. She's the liaison to the Hartland Rider Center, she manages part-time seasonal employees and helps develop, maintain partnerships with businesses and sponsorships. The Recreation Coordinator, Special Events Position that is frozen, they would manage the team programs, specialized programs and special events. Without this position, you know, our team programs is kind of one of the number one, one of the top programs that people ask us about, you know, can you do more for teams? You know, we need more team activities, things like that. And that, this position kind of covers that area. And so fortunately, we are not able to program as well for the teams under this. Like I said, Casia and Diana have, have taken on some of the responsibilities of this position, but the capacity to do it with all of the other programs is very limited. This is Senior General Clerical, this is Kelly Schwerzey's position. She's a front desk position. She markets for us, she does all the flyers and programs that are material that goes out on social media, making sure that things are in our civic rec system to register for and kind of oversees all the office things, people that come in. Then our, our part-time staff people. We have adult youth sports, it's usually about 10 to 15 staff, they're kind of our onsite game day staff. People that are there setting up equipment to making sure that everybody's where they need to be. Our rec leads and camp staff, there's usually about 10 to 15, they're the ones that are leading activities. They're taking care of our, our customers, our patrons, our kids, our participants that are in there, leading them through activities and making sure that they're safe and that they go home every day and that they have fun ultimately. Community Center staff, we have about five of those, they monitor the events and the renters and everything that goes out at the Youth Center. These are, we have a number of these individuals that are part of maybe each of these different areas. They're year-round, so if we can keep them on for a couple of years, that's awesome so that they know what's going on, they, they're trained well. But we see a lot of turnover as kids graduate from high school or, you know, they move on to another job. So, but they are, we do see them, quite a few of them year-round. And some of them come from the Aquatics Center. Once they're done with their summer season, they come on and stay with us, turn the off season of the Aquatics Center to take part in those programs. So the aquatic staff, there's about seven supervisory staff, 10 to 15 guest service staff and lifeguards, we have about 75-plus of them. You see those numbers, there's quite a few of them. That's because, especially during the summer, those, those kids, those high school students, they've got other things going on. They've got sports clubs, vacations with their, their family. We want to be able to offer them an opportunity to work, but also opportunities to be away and to have a summer. Our, our supervisory staff, you saw them the other night, they're a great crew, but they're also teachers full-time. And so we don't have that capability to have these people in full-time. And so we get them part-time, we, we do as much as we can with them, but having a lot of bodies around allows us to, to offer that time off and, and be able to fulfill the, the hours that we need them to take care of. Now I'm going to transition into kind of our fee revenue and what each area responsibility here kind of brings into the department and the city. With our recreation programs, we have a cost recovery model of about 120%. So we look to make about 20% off of these individualized programs, gymnastics, youth sports, these kind of geared towards individual benefit is where we, we want to see that 120%. So we're covering staff, we're covering all the equipment and facility usage. Community events, these are typically free to the community. We have sponsorships so we can help cover some of the costs, the costs on them. But overall, community events are to benefit our community and to have these so that, you know, the enjoyment of the community, things to do, keep people here instead of going to the tri-cities and looking for things to do. We also are always looking for grants and sponsorships to be able to reduce costs to the community. That includes the summer fund, or the summer, summer grant that we have the last two years to be able to offer half-price programs. That was a huge get for the department so that we could offer that to the community.
Brandon, I have a question.
Yeah.
So in your cost recovery model, does that accrue facility costs?
There is a small percentage in there that it does.
I mean, obviously there's a net loss in Parks and Rec, right? We don't recover all the costs that we charge for. Some of that has to do with just physical space, right? Parks, we don't charge an entry fee to go into our parks and use them, right? So there's a cost to the community for that. So I was just wondering if there's some sort of fee when we do a program included in there to help upkeep and maintain the facilities that we have developed or the community has built? So I don't know how much of that is included in your cost recovery.
Typically it's, it's just covering the overhead of the program, nothing really into the improvements of the facility. And we try to keep costs down for both.
Data cycle. Yeah. Just curious, on average, if you can tell me what 20% translates to in approximate dollars? Of your 120% cost recovery, what does the 20% basically profit represent in dollars?
For a-
So I guess, I guess the figure I'd be looking for is if we're looking at an annual total operating cost of recreation programs, what does the 20% more that you're making represent?
Like a dollar figure?
Yes.
I don't have the dollar figure, but if you take, you know, a youth sports program, right now they're $65. We try to- We try to, that 20% extra is going to cover, or we've covered all of our expenses and it's going into our revenue for that 20%.
Somebody stand up.
As far as community events, what's the highest dollar one that we have, consistent?
Cost-wise?
Uh-huh.
Fourth of July. Yeah.
Fireworks? You're talking that the city might not for participant participate in, you're talking the cost to the city.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Only question was, you mentioned the summer program. Is that continuing this year or was that mainly the COVID funding?
That was mainly COVID funding. They are trying to work on future funding. They saw such a huge benefit from it and there's a lot of work with legislature trying to get that funding back. They were close, but it didn't make the cut. They are kind of transitioning to other programs to look to have something out for next year. Fingers crossed we get something back.
Awesome.
Thank you. So parks revenue, like you said, we don't charge a fee for people to come in to use the parks. Picnic shelter rental, rentals, you can see those figures there, there's not a whole lot of revenue there, but it does bring in some, projected to make about $7,000 in this fiscal year based on that. We do rent out Festival Street for outside rentals and that as well.
Question on the, more on the sports field rentals. I know we have a partnership with the school district, is that, they're utilizing the fields, right? And that's at no cost, then is that right?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, sports field, this was a softball group wanting to use the lights immediately. And so we don't see a whole lot of that just because we offer some of those programs. Yeah, but school district, they, we have a joint use agreement, so we use their facilities, they use our facilities, no cost to each other. Recreation programs, you see the five-year trend there, that's going to be on each of these slides, but we're staying pretty steady there. We saw a huge dip with COVID, not being able to be open and offer these programs. We'll get into youth sports here in a minute, but that's our main revenue generator. We have great camps to offer all summer and then some of the special events and family team programs, that's there at the bottom. You can see just on our, you know, we'll have the, kind of that thing there with our staff and who's programming these programs. So youth sports, last fiscal year, we made about $75,000 on that. These are the trends that are going up. You can see just on the bar graphs, we've gone up quite a bit since 2019. So we've had 515 new youth sports participants since 2019. That equates to 51 new teams, about 10 participants on a team. 51 new teams equals 51 new volunteer coaches. Our soccer program in 2022, we had 96 volunteer coaches. And so that's programming, making sure that they're taken care of. We have background checks on all of them, we're making sure that they show up to the games and make sure they're coaching and following through with the kids and treating them correctly. And so there's a lot of time spent gathering volunteer coaches, managing volunteer coaches through those six-week seasons. So we offer basketball, soccer, football and volleyball. Each of them have six-week seasons and we've seen a huge growth over the last couple of years with them. Yeah.
I love, I love the chart, I love the statistics and seeing the more and more participation that's happening. One event that we used to have as a community was the three-on-three basketball tournament. And I know that was mainly put on by the school district, but we just talked about facility usage, partnerships and agreements. I think there's still a huge hunger to bring that tournament back.
Yeah.
If there's something that we can do in collaboration with the school district, I know they have a new coach just the other year, so maybe he's not really familiar with the historic tournament that's gone on.
Athletic director, Usher and I have had conversations about him. You know, he's trying to push on those coaches to be able to do it. It's a big haul. We have a dedicated weekend and I hate to lose that with the loss of the special events coordinator, we weren't in capacity to do it. He's offered partnerships to be able to run it together, but, you know, trying to resurrect that from being lost is a big haul and we hope to have that in the future, but, you know, at this point, just can't get anybody behind it to do it.
Brandon, I'm just going to remind you, you've got about 10 minutes left.
Yeah.
I want to say some questions at the end.
Kind of jump through these real quick. So community center, you can see there we made about $95,000 last year in rentals where we've got weekends, about 90% of them booked, kins and airs, receptions, all those. And so a lot going on at the community center almost every weekend along with park rec The aquatic center, so just finished our season, we're open in June, middle of June through Labor Day. This is just a brief synopsis of what a typical day looks like, open at 5:00 AM, close the facility at either 9:00 PM or 11:00 PM on the weekends. That's a lot of time through that. It's about 109 hours per week that we're open, whether swim lessons or somebody's there at the facility 109 hours a week. So having just one full-time person overseeing that is a lot of work, a lot of hours spent managing staff and what goes on there. And so here's some numbers. Invite you to take a look at those a little bit closer, but we saw pretty standard typical averages of this last year where we're at, swim lessons, aqua fit programs, good steady numbers from years past, were projected at about $365,000 this year. Concessions, 28,000 items sold through the concession stand. That's, that's a lot of product going through there, a lot of management with what goes through there. This is a fee schedule. Ours is on the left, so public swim, season pass, and you can see some of the other regional pools are pretty much in line with what they have to offer as well. We don't want to get too far above and move people over there, but we also want to make sure that we're covering our operating expenses to that 75% goal that we have for running the Aquatic Center.
Just a question regarding logistics, you know, you see a lot of the other facilities have that children youth fee and we have two separate fees. Probably make it easier on yourself, make it one fee. So I don't know why the difference there, what's the difference in a child and a youth?
The child rate is nine and under, the youth rate is 10 and over. And so with that rate, nine and under, you need to bring in a parent to oversee them. 10 and over, you're able to come in by yourself. And so that kind of distinguishes those if you're a youth or a child, you know, kids come in, they're nine, they say they're 10, well, we got to pay the extra dollar to come in. We can't manage every birth certificate there, but it kind of separates those and we're able to monitor and make sure that people are following those directions there. So that's, that's the reason we have that. What topic I wanted to cover was our fall swim season. We have a joint use agreement, so both sides don't have any fees using the facility. With that, we do host the high school swim team going on right now, typically from the last weekend, August to about October 31st. For us, in the past, we have done aqua fit in the fall, but it averaged about $600 in profit, but we do see a net loss of $45,000 due to staff expenses and all that running and operating the pool during that fall season.
Does the school district pay that?
They do not. We cover that.
We had an agreement for them to utilize the facility, that they would pay for the cost to keep it open?
No, the agreement was they helped us buy a swalen kit to help with the heat loss and so forth, and then this fell under the joint use agreement. We've explored trying to have that conversation with people with them, but that hasn't gone as far as we'd like.
That's because the electrical alone.
Yeah, that's a huge loss.
Thank you. Harken Rider Center has a September 7th that is now open to everybody, including seniors. We are establishing an agreement with the senior board to be able to be in there and provide that space for rentals and things outside of the senior programs there, 8:00 AM to about 3:00 PM during the week. And so anything outside of that, the city will run and cover and be able to program that space for recreational opportunities and rentals of the space. And so in the next year, we could see about $8,000 in revenue from there.
Has a restroom been put downstairs?
We're working on that with the basement renovations, working with our architectural firm to get that renovated.
The basement can't be used at all until that happens, so.
The Heroes Complex, we look to have our first tournament next spring, or this coming spring, but with that rental of the facility revenue, parking revenue, potential with our ranking sports going up there, it's charging for parking, we're exploring that. We don't want to put that burden on, but it's also another revenue opportunity to kind of help those fees and cover the cost of the field. Some of the other revenue resources, grants, these are in the last couple of years, the grants that we saw come in covering our skate park, our summer programs, splash pad, pickleball, things like that. We also look for sponsorships to take care of some of those costs with special events. And then partnerships, can't go enough saying thank you to these, these great organizations. The Kiwanis Club helping sponsor this angry swim lesson program. Lions Club with the tactile map that has been completed and we'll see it erected in the next month or so. Pickleball, Marlette Holmes is helping with our Park Park picnic shelter and Made to Thrive and Harrison Park basketball courts that were being developed. These partnerships are great and it allows us to do the improvements we want to see and what the community wants to see. And then finally, here are some comparable departments. I'll kind of let you take a look at those on your own, but we're pretty close with some of these other departments and, you know, there are some other, you know, fees and budgets that do differ a little bit. But with the outdoor pool, that was kind of the big one that wanted to include, all these departments have an outdoor pool, so it's a big part of the budget. With that, hopefully we have time for some questions.
So Mr. Smith, when you reviewed the budget this year and we looked at historical budgets versus this year's budget and we weren't able to add the additional staff member, what would it take to get the park rec budget up to where you'd like it to be?
That's a bit of a tough question. I can give you the answer to what it would take to get that position back, which is about, I mean, it's about $100,000 to get that position back. But to get it up to where I'd like it to be, I mean, I think that that would be a lot more than probably just $100,000, so, but I don't know what that number is exactly.
Yeah, just kind of looking at Mr. Arndt's presentation, if you go back a slide or two, we're significantly underfunded in a lot of our park rec areas compared to even like Pendleton, $600,000 and there are 4,000 less people, 3,000 less people. And then if you look at Woodburn and Walla Walla, you know, obviously they're 25% bigger. Walla Walla is 50% or 50% bigger. So, I mean, those are significant budget differences to maintain. And I think our park rec program is appreciated by the community and very valued, and I believe it's a quality of life issue. And so, you know, living in Eastern Oregon, sometimes we don't have the greatest shopping, the greatest restaurants, but we've got some amazing resources for our kids and families and this is part of that. And so that's how we retain and maintain people to stay in our community and recruit them to our community. Yes, councilor?
It's kind of incredible to me that, I think it was about 30 years ago, we started with the Parks Rec Department to begin with. We didn't even have one before that time.
I think it's quite 30 years ago. How long was it then?
I don't know.
Twenty-five?
It's been about 25 years. The very beginning, the old one, the parks were taken care of by the street department.
So 24 years and you said it started in 1999?
Well, yeah, and we had one employee at that point at that time too, when we first started, okay? So I mean, seeing this presentation tonight, just, it's incredible to me as far as how far we've come in all those years that we had a department and then, except my hat's off to this department as far as, I mean, because you got your fingers in all sorts of things.
So what's your low-level employment like? What's your lowest number of employees throughout the year? 30?
30.
Okay. And then it balloons to what in the summer?
140.
So you provide a lot of community value for kids and families. Some of these jobs are people's first jobs, you know, in high school and two years, guys that probably don't know this, but for two summers when I was in college, I worked for Elbow Park Rec Department, did, you know, lawn maintenance and that sort of stuff. So it does provide a lot of revenue for kids going to school and that sort of thing too. So not only is it the resources that we have in our parks and the recreation programs, but the jobs that we provide is what. So councilor Brown, I'm over here.
Just a couple of thoughts along with what you were saying, Mayor. For me, when I look at the comparables, I think Eastern Oregon, there's not as many amenities as, let's just say, a Woodburn or a Walla Walla, or maybe they have more natural amenities in their area. So it makes sense to me that we do have a little bit more on the recreation side because we do want to entice people to be here. Now that being said, I understand that we are short of position, but I think in context, it's important to also talk about, you say quality of life. For me personally, even though I know that we do need a rec coordinator for more quality of life issues, it's more important to me as a quality of life issue that we fulfill the police department's three officers before we were to fill this position. So I just wanted to throw that out as my remark, keeping this conversation about departments in context.
Councilor?
I'll try to make this quick. On here, you're saying two more years, might have to have a couple more parks? Is it necessary? Do we need a couple more parks?
Some of the agreements we have with the developers are to establish parks within those communities. It increases home values, it increases affordability, and so I'd always love to have parks in new developments to be able to offer that quality of life. People don't have to drive from Simroon Terrace to Riverfront Park to go to a trail. Having it in their backyard or within the neighborhood is kind of the standard that we want to have and is what the national trend is. You know, it does take more staff to be able to manage these parks and as we grow as a city, I hope that we can make them a priority.
Mr. Smith, do we charge a fee for developers to, like an SDC?
Yes, we have a Parks SDC and some of the parks that Brandon's mentioning are, some of those, the land was part of their SDC contribution, is they donated land and we agreed with some of that to put in other amenities, kind of coinciding with their development.
That's another hand. Okay, I think you're off the hook. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening, Mr. Arndt. As we continue to work through the different departments and budgets of those departments and trying to address our budget shortfall for the year and how we manage that moving forward as a city and what the community's going to have as an expectation for us as well. This is just an ongoing conversation that we're continuing to have and have some tough decisions that are going to be facing us moving forward, how we continue to provide those services and the limited budget that we have. We are scheduled to start our city council session. So we are scheduled to start our city council session at 7:00. Do you guys need a break or do you want to roll right into it?
Let's roll with it.
We're going to roll, all right. So thank you, Brandon. For those of you that are just joining us, we had a city council work session this evening to go over the Parks and Rec budget presented by our Parks and Rec Director, Brandon Arts. We are now going to open up the regular city council meeting for September 11, 2023. With the declaration of a quorum, we're going to excuse Councilors Primmer and Counselor Peterson. Just a couple of notes tonight, I guess it's kind of a special day to have our city council meeting because it happens fall on September 11. And so as we do the flag salute, it's always an honor to be able to stand up in the greatest nation in the world and salute the flag that we fly every day for this United States. And so it's a little bit more special today as we celebrate the September 11, the catastrophe that happened 22 years ago. And so I do that with honor and I hope you guys will join me in that as well. So please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome this evening. We're going to start out with a present, we don't have any changes this evening, Mr. Smith, okay. We're going to start out with a presentation from Hermison School District. I saw Mr. Bacon, welcome, Mr. Bacon.
Good evening. Well, here we are, right in the middle of things and it sounds funny to say we're jumping into our first full week of with students this week because it seems like we've been going for a little while. But our transition into school this year was nice with the Wednesday start, kind of especially for our younger grades to work into that, getting back into building some of that stamina up. And then yesterday or last week, we had Monday off and this week, look out, we're five days enrolling. And with that, our enrollment trend continues to move upward, which is nice. We're sitting at a little over 1,700 students at the high school. Our middle schools are going strong at 13, over 1,300 students and our elementary's at 2,400. And it's still staying with the same trend that our kindergarten through second grade populations are under 400 per grade level, which has been consistent following COVID. The nice part of it is, is once they hit that third grade year, for whatever reason, they're pushing up over the 400 students per grade level. So, and with that being said, our second grade numbers are getting closer to that 400 mark. So we are slowly gaining, gaining back to where we were once we were. So right now, we're at 5,500 students that are registered right now, K-12. And fall sports are in full swing and if you want to check out sport schedules, you can get onto the website and look at hhsdogs.com and that will have all the schedules that are coming up and as changes occur, especially with the decline in officials across the region, there are times where we are adjusting those games to be on different dates or times due to the availability of officials. So that's the best way to stay up to speed on events happening at the high school. And then we're rolling right into homecoming next week. So September homecomings, at least we're not going to be cold when it gets outside, so that'll be a nice thing. We'll be seeing South Ridge on Friday for football next week when that occurs. We also are kicking off outdoor school with our elementary fifth grade students. Next week, West Park is taking off on Monday, so we'll, every fifth grade group will be up there for three days and two nights and we'll finish up our final school. We'll return on October 6th, I believe it is, from outdoor school. So we roll with that. They're going up to Camp Alcana again, which is where we've been the last couple of years and it seemed to work really well. Construction still going on. Highland Hills is one day closer to being finished, so we're getting there. Right now, you know, the student drop off has really made a big impact, a positive impact for that area. Also along the streets there between Sandstone and Highland, traffic has not been as backed up as it once was. So it continues to become smoother with each, each week we pass through with everybody getting the routine of it and how it works out, but that's been, it's been a positive change for our families and for the district. They're also working on playgrounds, trying to get that done. The play structure area, the covered structured area, so once, once winter rolls in, our students at Highland will be able to be out under that play area when it hits. So they're still making progress on that. Desert View is covered walkway has been installed, and so they're just working on final details to finish up there between the main building and the modules that are on that backside. And the annex is up and rolling and going strong. Thanks for everybody who was able to participate in the ruin cutting for our annex there right before school started, but that, kids have really been excited to be in there and just the opportunity with the layout and format of the classrooms has been positive. General information, last week, we were able to welcome Alex Boyer to come and speak to our secondary school. So we provided two performances at the high school and then also both Sandstone and Arvin. And it was electrifying, the evening event that we hosted in Kennison Stadium on Thursday night as the lightning kind of jumped in on us. We did end up having to end that one a little bit early, but it was, it was a good time and I feel like people are going to talk about it a little bit more just because of the, all the fun that took place with it. But Alex brought a message to our students and talked to them about how to persevere through challenging times and what your self-image and the importance of that. And his key phrase is, it's important to remember that you are a ten and talked with those students about that. And he signed autographs afterwards and shoes and took pictures with the kids. So it was, it was a neat experience. He works, is in conjunction with the Cooks Air, which is out of Utah, and we are also partnering with them to provide parenting sessions for, who begin towards the end of October and then for the rest of the year on just how to help work with students, challenges that families may come out. And so there'll be more information that'll be shared out with families here in the near future with what that will look like. And then we are excited to welcome author Anna Landon Fuzey to the elementary school. So she's going to be coming in and reading and doing some book signings and so we're excited to have that happen there the first October. So that right there is a blast into the third week of school for this district.
That's all you got going on?
Just a little bit.
So is all the construction at the high school done now? Landscape, parking lot, everything?
No, they're still working on some landscaping pieces of it as they're putting in different lines for irrigation and whatnot. They've laid the seed down around the annex, but I think they have a few touch up things before it's completely finished.
And how's the partnership with the city and the Kennedy Park going? Has that been?
Okay. Well, I haven't been directly involved with it, but there have definitely been conversations back and forth on how the week can really work to make sure that our students have a safe passage to and from school and during those activities at night. So I definitely would say that from my involvement, we definitely have a clouded process that we're working towards to help keep our kids safe.
Perfect. And I appreciate the school district's willingness to take on the conversation around parental skills. You know, I think so much of this is a soapbox issue, so let me leave for a second, but so much of the challenges we face today as a society or the breakdown of family unit. And so the school district's recognition and willingness to take that challenge on, I think is important, key in helping hopefully young parents. And I sure could have used a lot of that when I was younger. Probably can still use some of that, but my kids have grown and moved out now, so, but I appreciate the school district's willingness to take that on and help young families do the right thing about their kids and help them have a great education experience.
Thank you. It's the most difficult job any of us will ever have, but we received the least amount of training for, so I don't think we can do.
Yep. Others, questions?
I'm looking at the online, can you give me the, the online address again, sorry, my W R, please?
Oh, you down, yeah. HHSdogs and it's spelled D A W G S dot com.
Thank you.
Yeah. Always a pleasure, Mr. Bacon.
Thank you.
All right, we have another presentation. You're Tobe County Fire District Number One, it's Chief Stanton out there, welcome.
You guys haven't been very busy either, have you?
No, I gave him the last week off. Thank you, Mayor Grothman, Councilfolk people and city staff. There we go. Again, thank you everyone for allowing me to present real quick tonight. It's always a pleasure. It is kind of ironic, we're here on 9/11, I guess, didn't think about that until you mentioned it, but we did our thing this morning, had our lab truck up and flying. We do an annual picture every day with our duty crews and served today on that moment. So definitely, I don't know if you remember where you were 22 years ago, but I sure do. It was sure a somber day for sure to be in America that day. So anyway, let's get into it. So this is kind of just a quick review of our last fiscal year. I did send out a, what I call a fiscal year review, I think Mr. Smith and Mayor Grothman got it. Fiscal year, very busy, a little over 6,500 calls. Actually, we've been averaging over 40% of call increase over the last four years, so we're averaging over 10% a year and we're on pace to break that this year. We're about 12% right now, looking at maybe 68, 6900 calls. 5,200 of those or about 80% are within the city limits of Hermiston. So obviously the bulk of our personnel are rep down town and serving them, you folks are all our citizens of this town. Busy summer for us this year. Our fire season has been busier this year, over doubled than what it was last year. Some would say that's because we had a pretty dry spring, was part of it, but most of our fires we've been fighting are somewhat related to human cause, whether they're intentional or unintentional or a mechanical malfunction, that it comes from a human being somehow. So very busy summer this year and actually two large fires. The latest one a week ago or so, we had, between us and you, but to the role, we hosted another state, state fire marshal's team here and some task force, four task forces from around the state came in and helped us and that's two in one summer and that's never happened here before, so rarely happens anyway, but so. And right now, we're actually by 18 EMS and fire calls a day. So then I want to go through our capital construction stuff. I'll break it down into kind of three categories, start with fire stations. Obviously, Station 22 is out on Diagonal Boulevard there, the intersection of Pumpkin Center. The bulk of it is a seismic upgrade. We got a couple of grants for that station and our Stanfield station, about 2.7 million with about 1.2 for this station. That did include some design fees, so about almost a million going to the actual seismic retrofitting of this station. We're putting a little bit of money in, some, some paint inside now, some aesthetic pieces to that out of our own bond money. It's going to be done in November. One of the things we've been waiting on is some roof stuff, some steel. We hope to have that done this summer and just, we're just finally getting some of the steel components in to build, make that more resilient in case of an earthquake. And so we're, they're going to get that started here very rapidly here in the next few weeks. Again, probably mid to late November we'll have that done and be able to reoccupy it. Station 23, that's out on West the Road, going out of town, it's also the Home Guard Training Center. It sits on about 13 or 14 acres. And we had a phase one that we started a couple of years ago and that picture up there is of our mechanics, two bays. We never had a designated area for our fire mechanic to work in. And if you can imagine with almost 40 pieces of equipment and some trainers, he's very busy. He also works, because he's certified in those areas, he works on other fire department apparatus, he works on some county patrol vehicles. So he's very busy with that. So we actually had a chance to build him his own area instead of taking out emergency vehicle places. So that was good to get that done. With that, that was about a $1.2 million expansion. But we had to use a CMU block actually because it was going to be about 15 months to get a steel building to get there, so we actually had to spend a little more extra money. And I think in hindsight, it's a better, stronger built building with the CMU block, but it turned out real nice. Phase two, we're working on right now and that's renovation of the actual inside of the other station. We're going to take out one bay, basically to add some capacity upstairs and downstairs. So we're going to add a couple more offices, an actual boardroom, if you will, for my port of tractors, and we're going to add some more living space to have more interns and for future staffing out there. And that's a big deal for us to get that out there. With a lot of our growth that we're seeing out there, like with the CDA lands, we get a lot of call going out there too. And it's also our substations, it's the quickest to serve the Hermiston City, especially on the website where the bulk of our calls come in with the elderly care centers and stuff. So very important, we add capacity out there to that station. And so that second phase two, we're probably looking, I don't know, around two and a half million for that and probably, I don't know, 300, 400,000 for some pavement probably. So we're hoping to keep it definitely below 3 million, we're hoping. And we're expected to start that maybe in December, hopefully be done by summertime, hopefully. Can't start that until the other two stations completed, of course. Station 24, that's our station in Stanfield. That also had a site incremental fit. It was a 1.7 million for that one with about 1.3 going towards actual construction of it. That's an older station. The foundational station was built in 78, which we still have, but because of capacity looking to the future, we also put an addition on to it so we could actually have people there 24 hours a day, which we didn't have that before. So we're going to put in about 2 million of our own money in addition renovations to that and we're excited about that, probably mid to maybe late November, what he told me today, should be able to be in there. And that's a big deal for us to get that station done and add capacity there for our future. Not least, but last, the Hermiston Safety Center. We're excited about that. We got about 30% construction design is done, working towards 60%. Mr. Smith has been gracious enough to allow me to kind of go after some other monies. That's why I have infrastructure funding up there as well. I'm working a little bit with Jessica Key, she's with Senator Merkley's office and he's on appropriations committee that helps with that kind of stuff. Also work with the state, I'll work with Representative Smith and Senator Hansel on some infrastructure money from the state this upcoming session. I'm told they're going to focus on public safety as they focused on governance this last session. So I'm hoping that this being the busiest police department and fire department in all of Representative Smith's district, we'll get some traction there. It's a pretty important building, obviously for the citizen Hermistons and the regional area as well. So working on that right now and we hope to start sometime spring or summer next year. That's probably going to be about a 300 to 360 day build time. Obviously Chief Anderson's probably updated where they're going to try to go and I think that's our biggest challenge is where we put our equipment, our people. You just saw the stat where 80% of our calls are in Hermiston, so we're looking right now actively looking to work and put some ambulances and an engine and some people so we can serve the city, because I don't want to have to come in from our rural stations, that's just not who we need to be. So if you know of a place that could store some stuff, keep it heated in the winter and some folks to live, I'd appreciate a homecoming, so. But we're excited about where that's going to go. That station was built by bond money passed in 1970 and the police and fire, the city Hermiston moved into it in 1972, so it's fairly old and, but we are excited about getting that revamped and positioned not only in Hermiston Police Department and the Fire District for our future, for our growth and for our, for our employees. So in apparatus where we at, we did order a new tower ladder. Now we ordered it when we did because we saved about $300,000 on it, even though it was 300,000 more than I had budgeted for. But we should have that within the next 30 days or so and with some training, we hope to have that in service by November. It's also going to be have that big bucket up the front, so it makes it easier to rescue people, makes it a little more easier, flows more water, some other stuff. It also allows the city, obviously, to have a little bit taller buildings if they want. So we're excited about getting that here. We just got our new engine in service. We have two new brush engines that we actually built in-house with our fire mechanic, he's pretty handy with that stuff. And I think the biggest benefit by him doing that is we saved about 50,000 each on those two engines and they replaced a 1990 engine and they replaced it and the other would be a 2004 engine. So those brush engines get beat up pretty good too by us. Obviously, when you're talking about a 33-year-old engine, that thing has seen a lot of years of time fighting grass fires around here. So we're excited about that. We're also excited about how we can try to save some citizens taxpayers money as well. And we got one new amensin finally. And we got one of our ammits in finally, it, uh, put our two-thousand-and-six ambulance into reserve status, it was time to get that thing in that spot. And, uh, we have one more on order, we're told maybe next summer, as they're still waiting for four chassis, so, uh, yeah, we're, we're, lots of mileage on our ammits, they, they rack up pretty fast, and so, we gotta keep that rotation flowing, so that's kinda the, the roundup for our fire and medical apparatus. Probably something I'm most excited about is, our most important piece of equipment we use is our cardiac monitors, every day, our paramedics and our EMTs use those, every day, and they are very expensive, and as you might imagine, they just get more and more expensive every year. They have a, we run the Zoll cardiac monitor, that, that's the brand of them, uh, and they have a program called Zoll One. And what we did is put down a bunch of down money on it, and then we're gonna pay a maintainer contract that's doable within our general fund, and so we've got seven new ones on order, and in about three years, when they have the brand newest ones come out, we automatically get the upgrade for seven new ones, which will keep us on par, and if they have upgrades within that ten-year period, we always get the upgrade. Just a, a great warranty work, we get a battery per monitor, per year for free, loaners, the whole nine yards, it's a really good program. We checked out some other places around the state, and in the state of Washington, they're doing this program, and all have very good success and high remarks, uh, dealing with Zoll and on this, so, we're real happy to do that, get that going, should have our new monitor here, I don't know, in thirty to sixty days, I'm told. Uh, obviously, AEDs, our Automatic Storm Defibrillators, we like to get those on all our command rigs and get them around, you know, you can probably see those in the hospital hallways and some other places too, we're working on programs trying to get those in places, and always looking for grants to go after those too. The Zoll Autopulses are those machines that do CPR for us, uh, while our folks are trained every year on how to do good CPR, they don't replace the machine as far as efficiency. Uh, they do so good that even though when we take a patient to the hospital, and we're, the machine is running, doing CPR on a person, they don't want us to take it off, they wanna keep that going, it does such a good job, so, uh, we need new ones of those, those are about fifteen years old, so we're looking for four of those. I have one grant out for one right now, and we're looking for more grants always for any of this kinda stuff. I will tell you, I just did receive a thirty-thousand-dollar Wild Horse Grant, going towards the purchase of one of our monitors, so, um, pretty excited about that, they're about fifty-four thousand apiece, and they're gonna go up by thirty percent, so we got right in under the thirty percent increase on them, so... Very excited about that, I think our troops are too, uh, to have the leading edge of, uh, medical equipment to help save our, save our citizens when we can. Some stuff along the horizon, obviously, uh, CD land annexation for Umatilla County side, uh, they're just waiting on the CDA's lawyer to send in their one-page petition. All my stuff is done with the county, and they're hoping to have that brought forward to Board of Commissioners on September twentieth. So we're excited about that, and what that looks like for growth and coverage, obviously, since it borders our current district, we wanna be able to get out there fast on stuff anyway, 'cause we just, we've had a big fire out there before, it started by the National Guard, it impacted the freeway, had some crashes, some significant injuries, so... Uh, that is an area where we're cognizant of trying to really bulk up our prevention work out there with fire lines and preseason burning, that kinda stuff, so, just had a conversation with the CDA staff today about some of that stuff, so we're excited about that. Also working with the Stanfield Pelletarian Brotherhood out there, and we're trying to get a fire station, and some volunteers there. They have four or five young men and women, or both men, I guess, out there, since I met them, they wanna be volunteers, and we're trying to find some grant money maybe to build a station out there, but until we can find that money, ISO doesn't care if you have a station, or if you have a heated shop. They have a beautiful big shop out there, and we're gonna work with them this winter, and get them some CPR training and first aid training, and I have an extra engine now to put out there, and they have a couple water tenders, and I can certify to work as fire tenders. And we're gonna put them in the, their heated shops, and the ISO can back this next spring or summer, and get them qualified as a, like a fire station, and everybody out there on that east side, that's big built area, will go down from an ISO, uh, down to an ISO three like the rest of us enjoy. Uh, just talking with Herb Stall and those folks, they're looking at a fifteen to twenty-thousand-dollar decrease in fire insurance premiums if they get down to an ISO three from their current, uh, ISO, uh, A-B. So that's pretty significant for them, and some of those other large farmers and people that have homes out in that area. Camp Reese, we have a fire protection agreement in place with those folks, that covers Umatilla and the moral county, uh, sides of that, uh, Camp Reese, out there for the National Guard, the Oregon Military Department. And next up is our EMS day car position, we're hoping to have that in place by January, February, uh, we were able to work that into the budget, uh, so we can, the car, we're basically working Monday through Fridays, or Tuesday through Saturday, whichever is our highest call volume days during the daytime portions, um, to really give our other folks some, some breaks and a chance to even just do some training at times, so, we're excited about adding that. Uh, Deputy Fire Marshal position, uh, we're gonna go, go back out for that, we had our qual set pretty high, and we knew that, and we got three candidates that didn't meet the minimum qualifications that did apply, so we're gonna reevaluate what that may look like for some qualifications, and go back out for that again, uh, as that will be the first time we've added anybody to the prevention division ever, so... We're excited about that, and that is off the OSM grant, uh, we got almost three-hundred thousand dollars from the state fire marshals towards that grant, so that's a good thing. Obviously, we're, uh, looking for additional firefighters and medics, as of the national standard, which is the National Fire Protection Association, uh, they have, about twenty years before they pass it, NFPA seventeen-ten, seventeen-twenty standard, which talked about deployment and staffing standards. We've never met it, we're always been behind, that's okay, but we're always, we're looking everywhere we can right now, we're about twenty people short, and that sounds like a lot, but we also cover, you know, all four cities, and all the rural area of ambulance and fire, so, uh, and you split it up over four shifts, that's only five more people at a time, so... We're looking everywhere for grants, and all are options with my executive staff and our board to figure out, how do we find that money in the next three years? We are gonna try to apply for a SAFER grant, which is a federal grant that would fully pay for it for three years, so, we're looking at every option we can to try to maintain our service levels, 'cause we're seeing those, those delays in service creep up again, like we saw back in, you know, fifteen and sixteen, and then we were able to consolidate, added another station open, and now we're seeing that same trend now, so, that's where we gotta get that, you know, third fire station open somewhere, somehow, somewhere, and so, we're working real hard on that. And, uh, we're also working with the county task force on homelessness, you know, that's becoming a bigger problem, obviously, we run on lots of fentanyl overdoses, um, and along with the homelessness, you know, we run on those calls, those folks, sometimes we're the first medical care they're able to see, and maybe they can get to an emergency room if they need it, but, uh, sometimes we refuse, but, so, we're, uh, we did get a position working with Commissioner Timmons on that for the county too, so we're excited about, maybe there's some way we can help there too, so... Lastly, come, come some district recognition stuff, uh, and I can't know, I don't know why we got recognized for some of this stuff, uh, but, uh, when I, I got a call from the International Association of Fire Chiefs about their Fire Rescue International Conference that was held in Kansas City in August, and they said, "We wanna be, have you be one of the ten departments we spotlight." And I was like, "Us?" I said, "How did you find us?" Uh, 'cause some people, they don't, they have to look on a map to find Hermiston, or Oregon, or Stanfield, Oregon, or any, you know, really, maybe they prefer the Peloton or something, but, uh, they said they had good researchers, so... Uh, we did that, and I wanna thank Mayor Grothman, he was able to come speak for us, and I have the video, I'll finish up with the video, he's in, appreciate it, Mayor, and, uh, I got lots of texts and phone calls from people that did attend it, were pretty happy about it, so... Obviously, UEC is gonna feature us, I think, next month, and there are people, our powers are people, in the ruralite and stuff, and then we just had our community paramedic Jessica Markham was on the OPB show, Think Out Loud, I think it was yesterday, no, Friday, maybe, so, uh, it's pretty awesome, and she got to do that, so... Exciting stuff for some of our men and women, they do, they do a tough job, and they do a banging job, and they get all the credit in the world, for sure, so, let me, let me end this with a quick little video.
You look great.
Umatilla County Fire District One has one of the best there is.
Umatilla County Fire District One is the largest fire district in eastern Oregon. We provide fire suppression, fire prevention services, paramedic ambulance services, and are one of thirteen regional hazmat teams from the state of Oregon. We work out five stations, cover two-hundred-and-thirty square miles, with an ammits service area of six-hundred-and-twenty square miles. It's, it's a nice mix of high-tech and farmers, I call it haystacks to dev centers, you know, it's kinda, we run the gamut, huge structural fires, huge wildfire fires.
I think that we are putting our constituents in the best place possible for them to succeed, you know, under any type of emergency, Umatilla County Fire District One is one of the best there is.
Well, the Umatilla County, uh, Fire District One is, is a huge strategic partner in the success of our community, public safety's gotta be number one priority for a mayor, any elected official, uh, and they have been providing public safety resources to our constituents in a timely fashion, super critical for the future development and lifestyle of our families.
Our community paramedic program delivers assistance to not just our ambulance service area, but to the rest of the county and neighboring counties as well.
A community paramedic is a paramedic usually chosen by the local nine-one-one service to work with patients, whether they're high users, um, or other identified groups within that county, to reduce their nine-one-one usage, and try to get them the best care possible in the best place possible, and usually, that's in the home, um, to either prevent, reiterate nine-one-one calls, or to identify problems before nine-one-one call occurs.
After the ten-day stay in the local hospital here, and two surgeries, um, I was at home, probably five days out, and, um, I got a call from Jessica with the community paramedics program, and she was, uh, arranging a home visit. Jessica came by for her home visit, um, she, you know, kinda did safety checks about the house, checked the fire alarms, the carbon monoxide alarms, and took my garbage to the curb, and basically, it was, was an ear.
The community paramedic program, um, in Hermiston has been a, uh, shining light across the state, it's been something that the state, other, uh, districts across the state have looked to because of its success. Uh, the paramedic program helps keep people out of the emergency room after they've been released from the hospital, they're checked in upon by the paramedic, to make sure that they're following their medications correctly, make sure that they're doing their, um, home care treatments appropriately.
One program we have been doing for over twenty years, and have been improving over time, is our college resident intern program.
Being a resident intern, you know, you kinda start out as a student when school starts, come August, uh, where you enroll through BMCC, and you're working on shift here, and so, come spring semester when school's over, uh, instead of a lot of people going home, we encourage you to stay here where we offer you a job as a summer seasonal, and so, I think there's a lot of opportunities where, you know, not only do we grow our own, but we really kinda reinforce that UCFD One is a big family here, and, uh, we want you to stay.
I was accepted into the student intern program, I did that for about two years while I was going to school for my EMT and building up some of my firefighter certifications. The intern program is invaluable in providing real-world shift, day-to-day experience in this business, there is no substitute for it, you are working with the crews, you're on the ambulance, you're on the fire truck, you're going on all of the calls, you're seeing everything that this entire field has to offer.
I think the internship program is very beneficial for people trying to get into the fire service, as well as it provides many benefits, such as tuition assistance, housing, time off from work, to be able to go attend your trainings and education.
Being an intern with UCFD One has set me up for success in medical services and firefighting, because it has opened a lot of opportunities, and it has given me a chance to do a lot of hands-on work that I don't think I would've been able to do anywhere else. 'Cause I'm here at the station, this is my job, this is my work, school, I'm able to put it like in a package deal together, it's not like, first I have work, then I have this, I'm able to like group it and apply it to everything. I had crews that were staying up late at night helping me study, they were dedicating like tedious hours, and I think that's also one of like the greatest things about it, is that, how much, um, when you need help, how much attention they're willing to give you and spend, just to make sure you perfect and succeed at that skill.
Whether teaching CPR to all our seniors in our high schools, or hiring all our interns in summer seasonals, we're able to, upon each level, to reach a person who is employable anywhere.
When we go to these schools and, uh, these community groups, it's a great opportunity for us to make a presence inside the community, and get the community more familiar with our faces and our commitment, it's also a great opportunity for us to provide education on emergency medical situations, or emergency fire situations they might encounter.
Our overall goal, of course, is to have a healthy workforce, to have a good, healthy community, and part of that is how we serve our community members, by providing good, effective, and efficient service. We're the first department in Oregon to go to a four battalion, a four shift schedule, that reduce their work week hours, um, it's a better workload balance schedule, I think that's probably the schedule for the future.
So not only do we give, uh, people more time at home with their families, you know, they have one shift, and then they're out of here, I think that that improves their health and wellness, along with that, we do have programs within the department where, uh, we partner with community counseling solutions, and so, if there's anything, whether it's a bad call, that they just need somebody to talk to besides our chaplain, um, they can talk with them.
Oh, because, uh, continuing education is such a big deal, we're always trying to continue learning, they do, um, want you to go back to school, they want you to have the degrees, we want to provide the professionalism that a degree offers instead of just a certification.
So we have everything here, and that's the diversity of the district, which is amazing for being in rural northeast Oregon, and for a department that's very moderate in size here, we're not really a huge department, at close to seven thousand folks a year, I need to hire more people, but you can only do that when you have those recurring funds. As cities grow meticulously here, public safety has to be a factor in how we do those, we gotta grow along with everybody else, and it all begins to with my staff, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it alone, no one does it alone, so... I think I've created a really great team here, from the top to the bottom, and that's the relationships, and that's, uh, what you do as a fire chief, I wanna build a great team around me, and that converts to better service to our public, to our community members, that's what we're here for.
There's any questions, or not?
I have just a couple comments, Chief, uh, congratulations, and to you and your team on your national recognition, uh, it's fun to be a part of that, and, uh, the video, and, and all the accolades to you and your staff for, uh, being recognized, we appreciate all the hard work that you do for our community and our constituents.
It has been a tough year, uh, several wildfires, um, turned into conflagrations, I guess you'd call them, um, calling in state resources, um, and, you know, I just wanna say a special thank you to you and your staff for saving lives, saving structures, um, saving animals, uh, that one, a couple weeks ago, that just moved to town, could've got really bad. Um, and there wasn't any lost lives, and very few, um, structural losses, so, congratulations to you, I just wanna say thank you to our partners that came and helped out on that, um, huge support on that one and the other conflagration we had, and the air, um, support is just amazing. Uh, if you get a chance to watch those things, it's impressive, um, how well they work, and, uh, some amazing, yeah, acrobatic work, and those airborne helicopters, so, uh, thank you to those state partners and, and other districts that came in and helped out as well. I did get to listen to Jessica's podcast, she did a good job, represented you, represented Hermiston well, um, it's a great program, and, uh, you guys should be proud, and our community should be excited to have the community paramedic, um, I think she's saving lives and, and saving money, keeping people out of the emergency room. And just, thank you for your partnership and your leadership as an organization, it's been a wonderful, uh, working partnership, and we appreciate you guys and everything you're doing. Any, yes, Councilman?
First, I would like to say thank you for being here, and, and letting us see and hear what's been going on with the fire department, and, uh, it, that was an awesome video, I really liked it, I was, and the presentation was done well, we can see what, how expensive the equipment is, it's like, wow, you know, the, for one, uh, item. Uh, I would like to know, that the, any of the interns go out and help with the fires, or were they trained?
Yeah, so, we hired, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six of our interns from last year were our summer seasonals, uh, we got a grant again from the state fire marshal's office, uh, for thirty-five thousand, we spend about fifty-five a year on summer seasonal program, which is much like the forest service, or already Department Forest for U2, yeah, so they got paid throughout the summer, so they don't leave us, they stay living at the stations, and, yeah, they play a critical role in our staffing models, and helping us on fires like that, 'cause they're, they come in and do a five-week academy for EMS and fire, so they're ready to go when they come out of the academy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always great to see you. All right, so now we're going to move on in our agenda to the first opportunity for citizen input. This opportunity is for items that are not on our current agenda, so if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything other than the current agenda, please come up to a microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address, try and limit your comments to less than five minutes, and direct them to me.
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, good evening, council, and our guests. I'm Mark Kamolski, I am the Executive Director of the Eastern Oregon Mission that are known to most of you as the Agape House or worthless house. I wanted to extend an invitation to all of you to come and visit us. For a lot of you that haven't been there in a long time or have never been there, I'd like you to see what our operations are all about. I also asked you to please now go past the Agape House and look at all the improvements we've made on the outside, and then when you come in, you'll see the inside. We are currently serving about 835 families every single month, which comes up to about 3,150 people a month with food, and we service about 200 homeless people a month. The homeless people also get a chance to come in, and not just to get food twice a month, but also to take a shower if they need it, and we provide them with the towels and all the services they need to take a shower. So I gotta tell you that our services have increased dramatically in the last year, and we see it nothing but increasing. So we always want to thank all of the businesses that help us, provide us with all the materials we get a chance to service, especially some of the food. We actively go out for grants to get more and more funding, but I just wanted to say we'd like you to come and visit and see what we're all about now. I've been the director for two and a half years now. We've made some significant changes and upgraded a lot of stuff, and I'm very proud to show it off and show you what we're really doing for our community. Do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you, Mark. Thank you to you and the Oregon Mission Board for all the hard work that you do to help those that are the most challenged in our community oftentimes, resources and facilities. And so you guys do amazing work. We appreciate you as a community partner in helping lift those people up and provide them with a meal or food or shower.
Well, like I said, we only have three paid staff members, we have about 30 volunteers, and if it wasn't for the volunteers and the community assistants, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So I constantly always thank all the businesses, all the volunteers, and all the people that provide us with the good services. So again, thank you so very much, and please take me up on coming to visit. I'll be more than happy to give you a five-minute tour that'll show you everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Others?
My name is Dave Hanson, I live at 1737 West Olive Avenue here in Hermiston. I just wanted to let you know that homelessness, of course, is a hot button on everybody's mind right at the moment. I have been able to join the committee with Commissioner Timmons on homelessness, and with Chief Stanton's approval, represent the fire service in how they interact with homeless along the way, so that indeed our commissions have a better idea of the amount of homelessness we have in this area of the county, and how it is affecting our public services, as well as how it affects our parks, how it affects emergency responses. As most of you know, the fire that was done across from the hospital earlier this summer started by homelessness. When I asked Chief Stanton why, I asked him seriously why it took so long to put it out, he came back to me and said, "Well, the homeless were there, they wouldn't move, I couldn't backfire, I couldn't use the techniques that we often use with bulldozers and preventing fire spreading." So we really have some problems that we need to address. I come from a community in northern California, in which we lost 500 homes in our community because of a homeless fire start. I've been working with the homeless for 15 years in that community on emergency services, so I'm happy to help here in Umatilla County as well. So I just wanted to know that Fire Department Emergency Services represented down with Commissioner Timmons's group. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your volunteerism. Others? All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items A through D, are any of those needs to be pulled up? Yes?
I would just particularly interest in having E presented formally rather than...
Which one?
Uh, E.
E, okay, we'll pull E. Any others? Okay, any public comment on items A through D? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D?
Still moved.
Second.
They're moved by Councilor Grom, second by Councilor Arden, that we approve consent agenda items A through D as presented. Vocal?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously, six zero. Item E, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so this is kind of a, basically traditional, we noticed the coming election and the opening of city offices prior to each election, and so that's what this notice is. Information is available on the website, particularly for the, for this May election, for the mayor and the municipal judge position.
Or can we answer the questions? So I think this is a notice for those of you that are interested in running for mayor or municipal judge, September 14th is the official opening date. Correct. And just trying to let the community know that that's something if they're interested. And I think it has to be officially filed by March 12th. So between September and March, you can apply for either the mayor or the municipal judge positions. Do you have any other questions about that?
No, I just wanted the public to be aware that those positions are available.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve public notice of the May 21st, 2024 primary election seeking city official candidates?
Second.
By Councilor McCarthy, second by Councilor Grom, that we approve the public notice of the May 21st, 2024 primary election. Vocal?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously, six zero. Under ordinance is ordinance number 2348, pending chapters 33, 93, and 96, and adding chapter 97 of Hermiston Municipal Code. Lily usually has some comments in here that I'm supposed to follow. There is, there is, there's some notes here, so.
I've got a few on that. I'm still hearing guys' stories.
Okay. Any, are there any, well, let's start with Mr. Smith, why don't you kick us off? What's going on?
So in 2021, the Oregon Legislature codified the Martin versus Boise decision from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, and this law basically does two things. First, it requires, it makes it so cities cannot stop someone from resting, and that's the language, resting. And then, but it does give us the ability to put time, place, and manner restrictions on that resting. And so this is an ordinance that was developed in collaboration, the Parks Direct Department, the Police Department, legal and administration, to kind of take a look at what other cities in the state are doing on this topic, and try to fashion a solution that seems to fit, you know, Hermiston and our approach to this, to this challenge. So what I'm going to do is just kind of walk through the basic provisions that are here, and then we can open up to, to discussion. So first, in the first portion, chapter 97 is a new chapter, and we move all of the language, that's why the other chapters are affected, other languages moved into this camping ordinance. First, an individual experiencing homelessness applies when there is no other option for, for someone, so when shelter beds, other options are available, this, that definition is not met, if someone, if there's another place for them to go and transportation to get them there. The second is, that I want to highlight is the camping site is not an established camping site until after five days. That comes into play with requirements for cleanup and so forth. There's some specific language in the state law about cleaning up or dealing with the materials from an established campsite, so it's important that that five days is a, is an important part of that definition. And then, like I mentioned earlier, resting, that is what we are required by the law to allow people to do on public property. So I'm going to go through first time restrictions. So this ordinance makes it so resting can happen between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and then all of their property and belongings must be removed after 7:00, 7:00 AM in the morning. Then they must move at least one block or 600 feet after that 12-hour time period. Place restrictions, so not on playgrounds, not in structures, including temporary toilets, so, or toilets would be included in a structure, not on city parking lots. If you're going to be on a sidewalk, you have to leave 36 inches so somebody can walk past or go past that spot. Not within 750 feet of a public or private school, elementary to high school is the specific language. Not within 20 feet of a building, and not under roads, bridges, on or near railroad tracks, or at the cemetery. Now, the manner restrictions are not being allowed to accumulate or leave behind garbage, including human waste. May not dig or excavate, may not obstruct public or private property, may not erect permanent or temporary structures. That doesn't include a tent or a tarp that is readily portable. Campsites must be smaller than 10 by 10 and separated from other campsites by 10 feet. May not make unauthorized utility connections, no open flames. Animals must be leashed or otherwise contained, and storage limited to items for personal use. Then there is also some provision for camping in a vehicle. Must be legally parked outside of a residential area. Must move every 24 hours, so within that is the requirement that the vehicle is operational and licensed. No storage of items or having items outside the vehicle, and no utility connections. Then there's some language about campsite removal, and this complies with the state requirements. Again, just pointing out, an established campsite is something that is five days. So a shorter time period doesn't have to meet all of those requirements. Then, under the enforcement, makes violations a Class D violation. And then it also, a new provision is it allows a private individual or entity to allow kind of, or establish car camping areas on their property. So the city has to approve, they have to provide sanitary facilities, garbage, toilets, and they, they're not allowed to have tents or other property attached to the vehicle, and then again, vehicles must be registered, operable, or towable if it's a, if it's an RV or a trailer, camp trailer of some sort. Then the rest of the changes are really moving provisions from other chapters into this camping chapter, and that's where it affects chapter 33, 93, and 96. And that's a quick summary, and be happy to answer any questions.
So you kind of just went through, touched the top of the issues, right? And so there's an ordinance in here that kind of outlines the definitions of all of that stuff. And so by definition, what does resting mean? Okay, and so it's defined in the ordinance, right? And a lot of these definitions, so this is, this is something that was codified two years ago, right, by Oregon State Legislature?
The ability to do some of these, this ordinance wasn't necessarily...
No, but I mean...
...specific language, but the requirement or the, yes.
And so, and we had a timeline?
Well, it became effective July 1st of this year. We aren't limited, you know, because we didn't have it in effect at that time, doesn't mean we can't put those restrictions in place.
So there, but there are people or other communities that have already codified these things?
Yes, and that's where we were able to look and see what some of the other cities within Oregon specifically had.
So not being the point of the spear?
Correct.
And so we allowed other communities to kind of test these out, and have these been tested legally?
No challenges.
No, not that we're aware of.
That you're aware of, okay. So every community over, was it over 10,000, had to go through this process?
Yes, I think it was 10,000.
Anyway, there was, there was some sort of requirement of all the communities in the state of Oregon, and it may have been all communities, I can't remember if this was one of those mandates that was over 10,000, or if it was small, all down to smaller cities as well. But one of, one of the questions I had, I don't see a great definition for in here, has to do with vehicle camping and moved every 24 hours. There's no definition for movement. So is a foot fair enough, or has it got to be a block or six blocks? You know, we do say that with tents, that'd be a block or 600 feet, but we don't say that with vehicles, so I'm just wondering what movement means, and maybe I missed the definition there.
That's a good point, and really this is, I, you know, we put forward some of what we thought was the best ideas, but we definitely don't have everything, so open to, to look in at ways to improve it.
I just think about our public safety officers, we have to be the ones to implement this and to hold people accountable, and so if there isn't a clear definition on there, I can see somebody testing that. I saw a bunch of hands, so I'll start over here. Councilor Myers?
I'm just wondering about the preschools and like Head Start, the daycares, that kind of stuff. I don't see where they off.
Right, so we had a couple of thoughts related to that. One, when we looked at, for example, locating or citing a homeless facility, and we tried to use all of those and set a thousand feet away from you, pretty much take away most of the spots that you could. And so we can't take away everything, we have to allow some space. The reasoning with the public schools, in particular with elementary and up, is a lot of those kids, or there are a number of those students who would be walking, riding a bike, maybe going to and from school in an unsupervised way, whereas most of the time, somebody going to Head Start, preschool, those kind of things are going to be driven, or, you know, either on a bus or with their parents. So, and, you know, a lot of the parents due to the other ages as well, but just there are more, more chances of someone doing it the other side.
Okay, and the other thing that I don't understand is about the campsite. Okay, you say that they can camp, or you're putting out here that, that they have the ability to camp for five days? Their campsite can be somewhere for five days?
No, I mean, they're required to only have a campsite for...
While they're resting.
The, the, the resting. Now, the, the reason to have that other definition is, is related to the cleanup. So if, for, if for some reason we weren't able to get someone moved, you know, they didn't, they had a campsite that lasted five days, then we have a increased level of cleanup responsibility that we would have to meet, and so it's an, on us, it's an incentive for our staff to really keep people moving on a daily basis, like the ordinance.
But how can they have a five-day camp when they have to move the garbage every day?
Every morning. One may, be somebody's arrested and goes to jail, and then the refuse or the camp material is left in place for five days. material is left in place for five days.
Or even, you know, sometimes, you know, I know the campsites out on the Oxford property don't always get moved, may not always get moved in one day. And so they could establish a five-day campsite there, just from a resource standpoint.
Councilor Lynn?
Okay, my first question is, what is the Class D violation? What is, what is that? Is that so many days in jail? What is it like?
It would be a $115 fine.
Oh, okay. Hundred fifty or hundred fifteen?
Fifteen. One five.
Oh, fifteen dollars?
One hundred and fifteen.
Oh, one hundred and fifteen, okay. My other question is, what the car camping on private property, is that, would that include city limits, that they can stay in a RV or, and/or a car?
Yeah, I mean, that's really, let's just use it for example, let's say a church wanted to set aside a portion of their parking lot as a campsite for people. And so it could be within city limits, yes, but it would be within a, somebody's private property, somebody's parking lot, and then they have to meet the requirements in there as far as providing garbage disposal and other, you know, sanitary requirements, restroom facilities, things like that.
Thank you. Councilor Garland?
Yeah, I'm just curious in regards to the vehicle movement question. In other communities that I've been to, it's just generally been a rule, regardless of whether or not you are a homeless individual, that you can't leave your car in the same spot for 24 hours anyways. Do we have any such existing protection for anyone, and what are the rules behind that here?
I wouldn't call it protection, it's 72 hours, and there is no real clear definition of what movement is, and so what we deal with is an inch here, an inch there. In the past, you used to be able to mark the tire, mark the roadway with chalk, and if they line up, you can tell it hasn't been moved, you can no longer touch the tire. So it's very difficult.
So, just along those things, I know Mr. Tug was sharing that there was some language that we had found in some of the other city ordinances, particular to this, that didn't get all kind of transferred into our proposal. We can go back and bring some language in related to what does moving a vehicle mean? Let's see what other cities have.
Good. Councilor?
In addition to adding more language, I was looking at page four, where it talks about a person may not accumulate, discard, or leave behind in or around a campsite, any rubbish, trash, all of that. Is it possible to also add shopping carts?
I would love to, but being able to prove that a shopping cart was not given to a person is challenging, because we are aware, with some entities in the past have handed out shopping carts, so there's an automatic defense built in.
So they provide shopping carts to the homeless population?
I'm aware it has happened in the past, yes.
But how does that, how can it be defined here, so that, let's say it doesn't get left behind, and maybe a fire could get started, or it gets left behind, and on windy days it doesn't go and hit a vehicle or, or a person?
So two things, just in looking at some of the manner restrictions. First, if they're leaving that there, I suppose it could be looked at as being garbage or refuse, or as something left on their, at that site. So again, that's a manner that they can't do. Also, in Section K, it talks about that they're not able to store any of those items, so if they're leaving the shopping carts as kind of storing their items there, that is not allowed as a manner restriction. And then in regards to shopping carts, I know that I've been speaking with City Manager Smith, and we're looking at other options related to shopping carts apart from the camping issue.
We get in a bit of a difficult situation, because they're the property of the store, but yet it was taken from them. How do we prove it was taken? By whom? All those types of things. And so we don't want to put the store, get after the store for that necessarily, but who, you know, how do we hold somebody accountable? So, you know, some of the things that Mr. Tug mentioned as far as, you know, it's part of their things that have to be moved, so if it doesn't move, then we can, you know, it can be cleaned up. But, and we can specifically add that to that section, right, I mean, as far as rubbish and stuff. I mean, that could be some specific language, but again, like the chief talked about, there's other difficulties that come into play too.
Okay. The other question that I had was on page five, when you say that you will notify agencies after a notice has been posted. What agencies are those? Are you talking about agencies that are working with Stepping Stones Alliance, or which entities?
So this is, this is if we get to the five days and we're going to post it. So it would be, I would imagine, and I don't know, this is language that is actually, we've had in place for a while. What agencies have you notified in the past?
We try to work with social services, obviously. We don't necessarily get anywhere with regard to who does this belong to. We're not very well equipped space-wise for a lot of stuff, and so the legislature has really singled out law enforcement, that if law enforcement is involved, these parameters come into play, specific to how long the property is held. And so we've had a lot of internal discussions, I've had business people call me, because I think they're, they're inclined to immediately call law enforcement. And we've had several officers stuck with needles, you just heard about fentanyl, you know, the chief made a comment about fentanyl. And so we're going to be reasonable in our approach, but we're not going to go through stuff, we're not going to touch stuff, because our people are frankly more important than that stuff. So it's really, it's really challenging when law enforcement is involved, but we've done, we have other partners, cleanup partners.
Well, you know, I think as far as the agencies particularly, I mean, we haven't had a Stepping Stones so much before this, so absolutely, they would be one of the agencies that we would reach out to and try to let them know that we're working on this. I know they have been coming and trying to, you know, make contacts with people in the parks and so forth, to let them know about the services, but, you know, CCS could be another one that we would inform and ask them to, you know, be involved as we went through this particular campsite removal process.
And then the last question that I have, what would be the best, have you thought of ideas to inform those individuals that could possibly be violating an ordinance about what they can and cannot do in a way that everyone is going to know, that way there are no surprises if there's ever, you know, a fee attached to?
Yeah, we have been talking about, you know, maybe we have a little prepared card or something that the officers can hand to everybody as they're saying, hey, it's time to move along, so that they can be aware, you know, that's not going to catch everybody that way, but, you know, and then, you know, I know, I'm confident that our officers are going to try to explain it the best they can when they're talking to them there, and so, you know, those are the, kind of the things that we're working on.
I think it would be good, I see some space, and honestly, I don't know if that's what it was meant for, that at the parks, you sometimes see those brown-looking boards that sit there empty. I don't know if it would be appropriate to have the ordinance posted there. Also, to maybe give a presentation at the shelter that they are currently using to house, you know, some of the homeless population, maybe having handouts there in English and Spanish, so let people know.
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to try all of those things to, to try to make sure and inform.
Thank you.
Just a question on the ordinance. I know these bullet points are all these straight from the ordinance?
It's more trying to summarize the language, they're not specifically the language that is in the ordinance.
I was more or less just wanting to stress having qualitative or quantitative data, also just units, like the mayor mentioned earlier, that we talk about in terms of how far a car is going to move. I was just looking at other bullet points, when it mentions a campsite being 10 by 10, just including the units in that as well. I know it might be facetious, but at the same time, I think it's really critical that we really outline every single bullet point and detail them with units. And my other comment was, I guess, just more in line with, the thing that Stepping Stones has going on in the shelter that they're looking to bring to the county, once that is erected and ready to go, I guess this really, I don't want to say it's null and void, but so long as we have space, there should be no individuals wanting to rest as long as we have space. Is that right in that first?
Well, I would just change one word that you used there, you said want. There's nobody who should be allowed to rest, and that's why I stressed in that first definition that individuals experiencing homelessness, it's not just that they may not own, or may not have access to a house or a home, but that they, but that we have no more space for them in a shelter or somewhere else. And so that, once that is fully operational, then yeah, hopefully, this doesn't come into play at all, because we'll have enough room for people. But if we were ever to be full, then these would be the restrictions that, that they would be allowed to rest under.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think you're going to find that there's more than 30 individuals in a community that are homeless. And we actually filled up every single bed at Stepping Stones or the PATH project, those individuals, this way.
Understood, yeah. No, I 100% get that. It's just more or less, just really trying to feel the impact of what this is going to be ultimately. It is codified, and we have to do something about it. Both PATH project, I'm very much hopeful that we continue at least helping that in order to avoid less in the city as well. I have one last question. It was kind of more in line of what Councilor Lynn was asking when she was mentioning the Class D violation. I understand it's $115. I also understand that people that are probably experiencing homelessness probably don't have that amount. I guess what I'm saying is, there should be consequences to an action. I don't know if necessarily finding them would be that, I don't know if there's community service, so I don't know if this is a question more directed to you or to municipal judge.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, what our job is from the police department side is to issue a citation. If you've broken the ordinance, you would issue a citation. That citation then goes before the court, and the judge does have other options besides just the fine. You know, they can, he can require community service, and, you know, the next item on the agenda that we will be talking about is, you know, another program where we're trying to help those people who are kind of frequent users of the court system to get other services and to get some things going in a better direction, so, yes.
Thank you. Councilor?
Well, one of the things that we've dealt with in the past several years is no man's land, like the Bureau of Recreation that owns and has no way to enforce anything, I mean, brought out tonight with trying to fight the fire down there. And we're limited within our city limits, I'm assuming, as far as what we're looking at, but it seems like, okay, we've got this area that's, nobody wants to say we're responsible for it, I guess, is what I think the point, and I don't know how we rectify that problem.
I do know, I did have a brief conversation with Commissioner Doran, that the county was in discussions with the federal agencies to get delegated authority to be their law enforcement. It's been a while since I've had that opportunity to check in with him and see where that's at, but that would be someone a little closer to us that we could utilize on those federal agency properties that obviously are problematic when we talk about this particular. Jaycee?
And we have assisted, I don't remember what the, what the name of the entity is, we have assisted them out there. But I view assistance as being reciprocal, and so we have asked to raise the canopy of the cover that's out there so you can actually see in there, and it's met with resistance. And so, again, I'm not really inclined to send our people out to catch a tick or walk into some sort of, you know, situation that could be mitigated by raising the canopy of all the trees.
So we will continue to work on that, but we recognize that's an area of difficulty, and that's why that was one of the areas that I had used as an example, where we might get to five days and have to go through this other type of a situation.
Thanks, Spencer. So one of the other questions I had too, in accepting this, we're also accepting that we're going to store this property for 30 days potentially. Do we have a facility that we can do that in? Who's going to manage that?
Well, that's, you know, some of the things that the chief mentioned, and that's why we've chosen a five-day window, so if we can be and have staff going to be proactive before that window, we don't have to store, we don't have to do those things. And so, yes, we have, I mean, it won't be pleasant, we do have facilities that we could utilize if we needed to go through this process, but I think our goal would be to try to stay ahead of that five-day window, that then we can use a different process.
Yeah, but as, like the chief alluded to, you may have an individual, gets arrested, goes to jail for 30 days, and you're sitting on that.
Right, but if, I mean, under this, they can't leave it there, so we can take it, I mean, we can remove it at that point, and we don't have to follow the five-day restriction, so.
But we still have to hold on to it for 30 days?
No, not.
That would fall under a whole different process, that's more of a seized property and-
Correct.
-to go along with individuals that are arrested and that sort of thing.
And our, our days are longer, I think it's 60 days, I think we've intentionally doubled our days to be reasonable, so that's why it would be best to not have the police involved in that seizure of property. But it happens on arrests, and so we want to be reasonable.
Do you see the police department taking this on as enforcement or code enforcement or a combination of both? Who's going to, I think, responsible for this?
I think a lot of the lead will be with the police department, but I know, you know, the parks, the staff has done a lot of cleanup, and Brandon gave me some numbers, you know, $6,000 worth of labor cleaning up homeless camps this year. And so, you know, it'll be a citywide effort. We're just in the process of hiring a new code enforcement officer, so I don't, I don't think we're going to throw this right at them directly, but, you know, I think eventually it will be a team, but I think, you know, the chief's been involved in all these discussions and is comfortable that, you know, that they'll be involved, highly involved.
Because we're in the balance of state, CCO, can we apply for resources- Because we're in the balance of state, CCO, can we apply for resources to help offset the costs of some of this?
Yes, we have an application in for some of those funds and we can continue to, to watch as that, that money becomes available. Yeah, some of it was available for cleanups and so forth. So yes, we, we will watch that.
Okay. Councilor Lynton, did I hear you say that?
Yes, is there an open date for when the homeless will be able to go to the shelter? Do they have, do they have any hubs built yet?
We're, it's under construction right now. We're, we're seeing late October is the tentative opening date. We don't have a completely set date yet, but that's what we're, what it looks like.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Carter.
Uh, two things. I just want to comment that has been marked about including units. And it looks like, for the most part, in the actual ordinance where definitions need to include units, those are present, it's just not in our abridged version. So thank you for, for doing that. Just a quick question because it's talked about where this can be enforceable. Would this, I assume, only be enforceable within city limits proper? Or with also within our urban growth boundary? Only in city limits proper?
Okay. Other questions, Councilor? So your intent was to present this this evening for consideration you have on your potential action.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it was something that everybody was comfortable with, you know, we, we don't want to wait too long, particularly on some of these provisions to kind of keep the, keep the process going. But with some suggested changes, we can bring it back to the next meeting. And I don't know if, you know, the council would be open to considering a, an emergency clause on, on one and so we can get it in place by October one, something like that, so.
Councilor Brown, you have another question?
That question is more a comment with that, maybe we, if, just depending on the process goes, you might have a really good foundation, but I was going to recommend if we pass and then make an amendment because it sounds like we, there are some changes that we need to do. And you've mentioned earlier that this law already went into effect July first. So we're already behind the eight balls, so.
Well, hey, we have, we have ordinances in place that we can enforce. It's not as good as this. It's not as clear. It's more difficult to, to make sure that we can communicate with our officers exactly what the requirements are. And so that's why this is, you know, more clear, more direct. But we would, you know, if, if, if the council would be inclined, we could, we could bring it back with an emergency clause. I know the council is not always like that in the past, but we would maybe ask you to consider that.
And I would like to take some public comment. Are there individuals that would like to speak to this ordinance twenty-three forty-eight?
First of all, I commend you on the request to put this together. As I stated earlier, I'm already seeing two hundred homeless.
Mark Gomalsky.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark Gomalsky with Eastern Oregon Mission, twenty-twenty.
Want to make sure you're on the west side.
You could describe here in Hermerson. Again, I want to commend you, I commend you on doing this. It is definitely needed. I have been to meetings in the last two weeks with people here that own businesses that are very concerned about their students that go to the high school and how they cannot walk from the high school on their lunch hour to go to seven eleven or go to the pads to get food because the kids are being harassed for either money or sexual innuendos being made to them. So there, there is definitely that, that they don't feel that their kids are safe. There are seniors that don't want to walk in the park or do their dogs walk in the park for the same reason. So I, I do know that this is going to be needed. I also want to remind you that the Stepping Stones Pathway Project is only going to be for single people in twenty units. I'm saying I'm already seeing two hundred. I'm also going to tell you that in the last two weeks, we've had homeless young men come to us that have been told, because they have been in Portland for the last year and a half, to come here and they come to the Agave House asking how did they get on our list for that housing? And I've explained to them, it does not exist at this present time. And they would, well, how do I get that to Portland? Can you give me money to go to Portland? Of course, we don't do that. But they feel that they've been lied to. Now, that's just two or three individuals. What's going to happen in the next couple of months if they are actually telling people in Portland to come here for those housing units? It's not, the chief said this over a year ago, if you build it, they will come. I'm telling you right now, it's already happening. So this ordinance should be done as quickly as possible. And I would say that if you do write this, as the commissioner and, I mean, the councilors have said, how are we going to get this to be known? I would be more than happy to take the printed material and as the homeless people come in for the, either the shower or the food, we will be more than happy to pass that ordinance along with them so that they understand that this is going to be happening. That's the only way I can probably tell you that I can help with what we're doing. And again, we have Martha's House where we bring in families that are homeless. And in ten years, we've had a lot of success stories and we will continue to do that. But we only have eighteen rooms. So like I said, I'm seeing two hundred people a month. Twenty units at pathways is not going to cut it. So you're going to still have this. And if they come from Portland more like they've had in the last two weeks, you're going to have an influx of a lot more homeless. So be aware.
How, Mr.?
Yes.
Yes, well, who's telling them in Portland to come here?
There are social agencies that are going around and giving out sandwiches and blankets. They didn't have any particular club or social service. They just said that the social workers that were providing that, and they also get needles, you know? And I said, we do not do that here. And, but they were told. And they were actually given bus tickets from Portland on a Greyhound bus, dropped off at Pilot and then walked into town. So I'm just saying, be aware. This, I don't think you guys know that this is really happening. And, you know, you could get an influx in the next couple of months, especially as the weather starts changing. And even if we, even though we have the warming shelter, it's not going to hold a lot of these people. So be aware. And again, I commend you on doing this with the ordinance to help. Thank you.
Other chief? He answered, he has another question? No.
My name's David Doran. I'm sure you know me because I'm, I'm an advocate for the parks. And my backyard is next to Hodge Park. And this ordinance, I think, will clarify a lot of, of issues that the police have in, in taking care of the park or the homeless or what have you. And as he mentioned, we are seeing quite a, quite a big influx, you know? And I think it's because the city of Portland has enacted a no camping policy on their sidewalks and parks and everything. And their big issue at the, with the media is that they aren't giving them many maps of where to go. So I'm sure these social services people are giving them some type of indication. But my, my, my concern is it's this, it's a different culture that's moving into this park. It's, it's, it's almost a criminal culture. The minute they come in, they start disarming all the sprinklers in the park and, and it's prostitution or sex trade and drugs and everything else. And they, and it is a severe problem. I don't think we have a handle on the number of homeless there is in, 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 just in town. And so, boy, I sure love this. I would wish we could get something enacted tonight to help everybody, especially the homeowners next to the Hodge Park. It's been, it's been an incredible summer. And I'm retired. My best golfing buddy died, my favorite dive bar burnt down. So I've, I've injected myself into this, you know? So I've gathered some information on the whole thing. And I, I agree with the process we're going this way. I wish it would be easier, but the homeless is a very complicated issue all over.
Thank you.
Kate Bacon, thank you, with the Hermerson School District. On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Mooney, who's unable to be here tonight due to a board meeting, asked if I would read this. Mayor Drosman and the city, or Hermerson City Councilors, the safety and wellbeing of students is the top priority for the Hermerson School District. This includes students' time on campus, in transit and from school and in their home environment. Students of all grade levels use public sidewalks, parks to walk to and from school each day. It is in the best interest of the students and our community that this, these areas remain safe, open and well-maintained and free of illicit activity. It is also in our community's best interest to ensure children have a safe place to sleep each night and that we make use of available public resources to provide housing options for homeless families and individuals. After reviewing City Ordinance twenty-three forty-eight, I believe it creates fair and enforceable rules regarding the use of public areas and will improve the safety of our students. It also makes clear that playgrounds, sport fields and areas surrounding schools are to be uniquely protected for the good of our youth and our community. I support the passage of City Ordinance twenty-three forty-eight. Superintendent Dr. Tricia Mooney. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Others?
Hello, Anne Mitten, eight ninety-five Southwest Seventh Street here in Hermerson. And I just wanted to comment as an avid walker along our trails, I have noticed some changes with our increase in the homeless population. I no longer feel safe to walk by myself. I used to go and walk at, you know, five AM, six AM. But then I now started to get stopped and asked for monies, just random approaches from homeless people. I also take a lap around Hermerson High School during the day. And I think it is important to mention about the moving of a vehicle because I see the same homeless encampment vehicle parked on one side of the street, then it's on another side of the street. And then later on the next day, it's just a little bit farther down the street. So I just want to call that out. And I appreciate the efforts being made to, you know, help keep our community safe. But, you know, that's definitely, you know, I just see so much more of that in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
My name is Aaron Wedding and I live at thirteen fifty Southwest Sixteenth Street here in town. I'm not only representing myself, people in my community, but I'm the post commander for American Legion, post number thirty-seven. And one of the things I wanted to address is that we like to rent McKenzie Park once a year for our better picnic. And it's my understanding then when you rent something, it's yours for the day. And I've gone by that park several times in the last few weeks to check on the homeless population. And in conversation with one of the members, employees of the Parks Department, I guess the restrooms at McKenzie Park are defunct, am I correct? So what do you put up next? Porta potties. Who takes care of them? Who pays for it? Why should I have to pay for somebody that doesn't want to work? Why should you have to pay for somebody that chooses not to work? They'd rather panhandle and not pay taxes, am I correct? I am correct, by the way. But you know the old saying, that you give a mouse a cookie, he'll want what? A glass of milk. And if you invite these people in without this ordinance, you're inviting that population in. The method has changed, but the method is still the same. Way back when I was a kid, a woman wanted to know why the bums always came near her house. Finally, one bum told her, said, well, there's a mark on the fence. She says, how do you know? Did you show me? And he did. All this time, she was the only one in the neighborhood that was being hit up by the bums. So when you don't, if you don't pass this ordinance, guess what's going to happen? You're going to put a mark on your fence. And if you don't protect the people in this town, I appreciate what the young lady just said. I walk Riverfront Park practically every day. I see a lot of single women, single walkers, they're females, and some in couples and some elderly. Now, I've only seen a few homeless down there. Some spend the night in the restroom where they lock the door and people can't use the restrooms. We've had to call the police to get a overnight camper out of there. One of the ladies kept complaining to me because she knows I'll call the Parks Department. And she says, they're smoking pot or some other chemical in there because she said, I can smell it. So what are you going to do if your kids go in there and they smell it? And they become sick, who's responsible? I'm getting a lot of stares. Who is responsible? Is it the parents? Or is it our city fathers who would have, might allow this to take place? Next on the list is sanitation. I don't know what Stepping Stones is going to do for sanitation. One of the things that I've always concerned about when I see what's going on in Portland, Seattle and Los Angeles, when is typhoid going to break out? Sanitation. I was down at Riverfront Park one morning walking and I immediately got on my phone, left a message with the Parks Department. Your sanit, your porta potty is on its side and the liquid is running across the parking lot. Who's going to take care of that? As a former employee of the Corps of Engineers, I was in resources. I've had to clean up a lot of mess that people leave behind. Have you ever heard of Matadorian Park? A lot of homeless people lived there for fourteen days or used to, until the park rangers moved them out. Who's responsible for that? I've had to clean up their mess. It's no fun. It's a sanitation nightmare. So gentlemen and ladies, here's what I propose. Put signs up no matter how big they are and clean it to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weddington. Others?
David Anson. I'm going along with the chief's comment on undercutting the basic foliage so that we have done that in the past, what we call masticate under the areas. Because what you're doing in this situation, you're going to have to look at not only the city, but the county as well to be your partner. And if you're moving them out of the city, they're going to go into the, into the county. That's what happened along the river. That's where the fire started in the river. As we all know, a fire doesn't go borders, it just comes right across. Chief's got a great idea of working with the county, see if you can get mastication done along the areas so that the tree limbs are cut up high enough so that you can immediately identify if there's homeless within that area and if they have fires going. We've used that in the past in the other districts I've worked with. It's very, very effective. I hope that we're coordinating, coordinating the Hermerson efforts with the county efforts in this because it's really critical that we're on the same page. And if we're not, all we're going to do is just move them out. I've just, I've just seen what happens when a homeless fire starts. It's devastating. So anything we can do is collectively between the county and the city on the same, keeping in the same level playing field, I think will greatly help both of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others? Well, you know, it's a very complex issue, and not something that, I don't think any of us as a councilor signed up to take on. And, you know, it's kind of one of the jobs that we accepted as responsibility of being city father, as alluded to earlier, or mother. And so because of the, you know, Boise Martin decision, and how we manage homelessness and resting, and those individuals within our community that either accept responsibility or personal accountability, those are the individuals within our community. And so we have been given some reasonable time, place, and manner considerations tonight. I think that's part of the requirement of Oregon Hospital 3115, is that they're reasonable. And that's why we allowed other communities to kind of be the point and spear in discovering if these were going to be challenged in court or not. And so it's good that we're learning from some of our neighbors across the state, and taking the best of those practices that we're finding are working. We may have to come back and modify it. We may have to come back and adjust it. This is our first attempt at, as a community, at trying to put some coordinated definitions in place to help our officers and other agencies manage the challenges that are created with homelessness. But also, you know, it's a collaborative process by which we're trying to address it with services, you know, housing, warming shelters, cooling shelters, working with our community agencies and partners, and trying to find transitional opportunities, so that they can be more productive members of our community. But also recognizing, there's a lot of people that are law-abiding citizens within our community that deserve a safe place to raise their family, and a healthy place to raise their family. And so it is incumbent upon us to look out for those people as well. And so I think this is a reasonable attempt to do that. And we've had some great conversations tonight, and some great ideas that were brought forward too. I would be open to how the council would like to proceed with tonight's action. Do you want to move forward with it?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Is a potential option to adopt as presented, but instruct staff for further information that we could later add into the...
Add it to our resolution. Add it to our... Precisely. Mr. Tuddy, how would that look? As far as ordinance, amended ordinance in the future?
It would.
Okay.
As we're amending sections today, we could do that.
Okay. Other questions?
What about the moving of the vehicles? We already know you lost your gun down, so...
That's right. We need to define it. Yeah. So we have to come back with a later definition.
It could become, it could come back as soon as 30 days from now. Right.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, it could come back next time, and that provision would have a 30-day window before it was effective, but this one, starting today, would be effective sooner.
Okay. Councilor Brown, you have a comment? No? Any other comments? How would you like to proceed, Councilor? Do you want to move forward with the ordinance tonight?
Oh, yeah. Looks like some group consensus around that.
So I'm going to request first reading of the ordinance be read by title only, and calls for roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Tuddy?
Ordinance number 2348, an ordinance amending the Hermiston Municipal Code by amending Chapter 33, 93, and 96, and by adding Chapter 97 entitled "Use of City Property for Camping."
May I request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting, and the second reading be by title only, and calls for roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Tuddy?
Second reading by title only of ordinance number 2348, an ordinance amending Hermiston Municipal Code by amending Chapter 33, 93, and 96, and by adding Chapter 97 entitled "Use of City Property for Camping."
Thank you. And I would accept a motion that ordinance number 2348 be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the City Council. So?
Second.
And moved by Councilor Brown, second by Councilor Myers. Yes.
Yes.
That ordinance number 2348 be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the City Council. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. So we have passed ordinance. We have a couple suggestions or recommendations for amending that ordinance in the future, and we can come back at a later council date and do that. Yes. Okay. Resolution 2291, Intervention Services Opioid Funding in our Government Agreement. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So both the city and Umatilla County are direct recipients of funding from the National Opioid Settlement, and the, it was kind of suggested that the city of Hermiston, the city of Pendleton, and Umatilla County put together some of those opioid funds to get some extra support services at both of the municipal courts, to help those who are repeat visitors at the court. And particularly those, you know, many of those have a, you know, a substance abuse challenge that they're working on. And so what this agreement does is, is it provides that we will put in our portion of those funds, and then the county and the city of Pendleton will put it together, and then that there would be two positions. One that works in Hermiston, one that works in Pendleton, to support and try to help those people who, who need some extra support, kind of moving along. As I stated, we're slated to, over the next 15-plus years, to get about $30,000 a year in opioid settlement funds. So on our own, we wouldn't be able to hire necessarily a full-time person, but in conjunction with the county, we would be able to do that. And the county has an agreement set up with CCS to do this service. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. I think this is an excellent use of the small source of funds that we're receiving, although it's not that small, but $30,000 doesn't go very far as far as hiring staff. So I'm super happy that the county has agreed to collaborate with us. I'm guessing they're putting in some significant dollars into this to fund the staff members. So I appreciate the county's partnership on this, and hopefully we can transition some of those folks that have maybe some opioid addictions, and now fentanyl addictions, and hopefully transfer that back into productive members of our community. So I think this is an excellent use of those funds. Comments? Questions?
I just want to make sure that we are only giving $30,000 and no more than that. Is that correct?
We're only giving what we get in opioid money. That's all we're agreeing to. So if it has gone up recently, and another couple of companies agreed to the settlement, so it's gone up a little bit, but we would only contribute that, no more.
And it's a contribution of just the opioid funding, it's no commitment beyond that from general fund dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Public comment? Any public comments on Resolution 2291? From the judge, or his lovely assistant?
You're the last two left.
I have to go.
You're the only person who hasn't spoken.
You guys... I don't...
He wants to.
Asking to be on my phone. Cameron Bendixson, 456 Northeast Skyview Court. I, you asked about why I haven't spoken earlier, and I think if you go to State of Union, and the judges sit there stone-faced, that's kind of what I have to do, I think, in most cases. So, but on this, I think it's a valuable thing to have a resource available for defendants who, as Manager Smith mentioned, who are in the system, so to speak. Some of my abilities are a little bit limited on what I can do. And to have a way where we can have this, the idea is that we have a peer mentor, to have somebody that is in court, and the defendant is facing the first appearance on something, and on the recommendation of counsel, ideally, we have this peer mentor in court, who I can point to this person and say, "Mr. Smith, you need to connect with this peer mentor. They're going to conduct an interview and recommend what treatment you may need, what resources you need help with." It's an idea that can point folks in the right direction. I think a lot of folks, whether there are, even if they are frequent flyers, maybe it's their first time in court, but they just had a rough upbringing, or they don't have a lot of life skills, or, you know, it just kind of runs the gamut. And so to have an opportunity for someone in court to have a peer mentor to kind of hold their hand that's completely objective, it's not necessarily a court staff member, or even their attorney who I would appoint, but this person can kind of point them in the right direction, so that they know where to go, just to start to make some connections with the community. So that's kind of the idea behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. So I would take a motion to adopt Resolution 2291, may I follow the order? So moved?
Second.
And moved by Councilor McCarthy, second by Councilor Harden. Now we adopt Resolution 2291. May I follow the order? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. Community survey report, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we've been utilizing this community survey that's run by Zen City through an online solicitation of feedback. And we get a report every six months, to kind of see how we're doing on different factors. And we can kind of take a look at, you know, over time, how the city's doing. It looks like in a number of areas, you know, doing a little bit better. And so the full report was in your packet, but this is really, you know, one of your council goals was to kind of evaluate how we're doing communication-wise, and how people are feeling about city services. So this gives us a picture of how we're doing on a kind of an ongoing basis. So I'd be happy to have any questions.
I was able to look through this. It's, yeah, excellent information. It's good to see we're making progress, we're going in a positive direction. I guess the one question I have is it seems like sometimes people, it feels like maybe getting farther away from the COVID situation, people are more positive. And so I'm wondering if there's some correlation amongst cities, if they're seeing a transition now that we're a couple of years out from COVID, or if it's just, we're just doing such a great job as a community, and that's why we're going in the right direction.
You know, one of the things that they do have, if you look at the end of the report, it does compare against some...
National trends.
Yeah, some kind of benchmark communities. It's a little hard to kind of tell on that particular question, and one of the things we brought up, Daniel and I meet with Zen City on a regular basis, but one of the things we brought up is, are these committees really our peers? Can we get some that are a little closer, a little better? And, you know, they have to, it has to be their clients as well, or else, you know, they're not getting the same data for every city out there. So hopefully, we can see some better comparisons as we look at the next six months on this. But, yeah, we can, we have actually our call tomorrow, I think, and so we can ask to see if they're seeing any trend of kind of upward tick on everybody. But I would agree, I think there is some of that out there. But, you know, I think, I think we're going to see that go up and down, frankly. I think we're seeing a good upward trend right now, but, you know, if this hits people when something negative has come out about the city...
Why don't we scroll up?
Yeah. Bam! So, you know, but I think it's more of a long-term trend, and watching how we do on some of these specific areas will help us as we kind of evaluate how we're doing.
And then when they talked about, you know, maybe specific issues with the community, did they just identify homelessness on this survey, or that was something that...
No, that was, they, see, they have a standard set of questions, and then we can do some focused type of questions on kind of a hot topic. And so we chose homelessness on this one. It'll be different. I mean, I can't remember what we chose for the next six months.
Law enforcement.
Oh, law enforcement. So it'll be something a little bit different every six months.
Got you. Because it seems like, you know, that is raising, hearing that frustration rise to the top of a lot of the surveys that you're reading across the state, even across the nation right now, is concerned about homelessness.
Yeah. I wonder if we could do like a survey, informing the community some of the challenges we're facing with the budget, and hearing from them about what they would be willing to pay for, what would be, they would be willing to let go of, or some ideas that they can give us that maybe we have not explored. I think we need to be educating our community more and getting more feedback in a, I guess in a non-threatening way, where anyone can speak their mind freely and give us that kind of feedback.
Yeah, I think we can work on some things like that. I just, you know, my experience with that, those types of questions is, most of the time, nobody wants any extra. And so it's hard to word the questions and get a good, good feedback. We can look at ways that we can try to get some feedback as, as we kind of take a look at the budget situation going over the next few months.
I think one of the conversations City Manager and myself have had is, I think this is going to require some sort of public forum potentially, or community outreach. And so here's what we're looking at, here's the limited resources we have. Tell us what's important to you, and tell us what your thoughts are about paying for additional resources, and what does that look like? And then we could potentially, once we lay it out, you could come back and survey people. Obviously, people have to come and listen, so making sure that we get a great public outreach about the conversation. But I think community engagement is going to have to be a part of that conversation.
And there are some, this company, Zen City, there are some other tools that we can potentially utilize to try to hit some of those areas, but we really need to come up with a framework that we're asking them to kind of take a look at, but...
Well, even when we used Sarah, when we were doing the vision, you know, that helped create some forums and get feedback from different each groups. So I think it would be valuable for us to get some feedback, and then, as you said, come back and say, "Okay, these are some of the ideas or suggestions we've heard about."
Other comments about the survey? Yes?
Yeah. First comment, I just find it interesting that if you look at Page 75, what residents want changed, and what's the one thing you would change in Hermiston is? Restaurant is the biggest word there, which I thought was interesting based on some of the other questions that are here. But I did find it difficult, and I just wanted, for my own clarification, to understand some of the statistics as they were presented. Where it's bold, it makes sense, but then some of the other neutral and dissatisfied rankings. So for example, on Page 77, there is a dissatisfied score of 29% regarding residents that homelessness is an issue in the city. But since that question was ranked on a 1 to 5 scale, but the question is, but the way they present it as dissatisfied, it would seem to me that those people feel that homelessness is not as big of an issue, because they would have ranked it with a lower ranking. Thus, we would not be dissatisfied with the question. If that makes sense?
And what Page 77 are you talking about?
Page 77...
77 of the packet.
Of the packet, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So it's a...
Section 11, I think.
For example.
It's actually 25.
34, so why else?
We're at 25. So the particular question was 40% of residents feel that homelessness is an issue in the city, and that's down 7% from the previous cycle. And so I'm just curious about that, and just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly for this particular question, that the highlighted red low score, even though it's being presented as dissatisfied, the people that would have voted for it would have felt that homelessness isn't an issue. Am I correct in that understanding?
The green would be people who are saying that it isn't an issue, I would think, yeah. The green would be people who are saying that it isn't an issue, I would think, yeah.
Thank you. And then just another comment in comparison to, I believe it is just a few pages earlier when we're looking at our community benchmark, which is 73 of our packet. Just, it looks like for the most part that we are fairly close to most averages, but I just want to draw attention, just so the council is aware, that availability of affordable housing ranks below 20%, as well as availability of a variety of art and cultural events. And then we have a fairly large gap, even though it's a higher percentage of satisfaction, we have a fairly large gap on sense of overall safety, where we rank 39% in our survey, but the cohort in the national average rank in the high 50s. So I would just like to consider that as we're finding ways to potentially introduce new fees or find a way to fund more police officers is apparently less than half of those surveyed feel that there is a sense of overall safety in the city. And that's, and we're fairly below the average as well. Yeah.
Well, Mr. McCrory, you could also, as a result of Desert Arts Council, I think Desert Arts Council used to bring a lot of those cultural events, and as a result of that club being no longer, I think that's why you probably see some of the results on here. But I would imagine that the affordable housing question will change in the near future with all the different housing that will be going up during the winter or stuff.
We'll have to see. I mean, I think part of that is, you know, perception, but yeah, hopefully. And actually, we have on schedule for the next council meeting, one of the groups interested in bringing some affordable housing to the communities wanting to present before the council next meeting, so you'll be able to get some more information on that.
Any other questions or comments on the survey? All right, seeing none, there's no action take on that, right, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just an informational.
Okay. Perfect, thank you for the update. Committee liaisons or reports?
Yeah, faith-based.
Yeah.
Chaplain Terry Cummings announced that the National Faith and First Responders Event is happening on October 7th at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at View Park, and it's an event that's in conjunction with the Kiwanis Club, Kiwanis Kid Day event, and of course, the Parks and Rec Department's part of this, I think, if I remember right.
The biggest part.
And also, they reported that all the schools have been adopted by the different faith groups, and so that was a, and also mentioned that they felt they had a very productive meeting with the mayor and city manager regarding things that the committee could work on. So we appreciated that, some of those things, there's nourish parent trainings and working with past project, and also helping parents of youth going through the CAF program. Also, one of the things that they brought out was they'd like to see the recycle day event return, you know, with changed Santa Santarina disposal, and so seeing it get brought into the table again, maybe, because that was, I hope that was a great event for our community. And that's about it.
What is the status of that, Mr. Smith? Given up any update, ran?
This event was typically ran by the Parks Department with staff limitations. This last year, we decided not to do it, to be able to put that program together, but hopefully this next year we'll have the ability to do it.
So we're short of one staff member in your department, is that right?
That's going through our Parks Department and the seasonal staff. When that timeframe comes around, they are not on board yet, and so it's a big volunteer hall.
So potentially working closer with the faith base.
Yeah, they get volunteers. Volunteers from that base.
Yeah, I think it was a hugely valuable resource to our community. I agree with you.
So that's, I would just.
Thank you. How about other committee reports? Next meeting, 14th. We'll be on the 14th.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Brown?
So I am part of the community accountability board, and we met, and we have a change in who's going to be taking that over, and that will be Officer Coobey. Officer Naga is stepping up from that, and now Officer Coobey has the opportunity to see how that pans out.
So do you actually do any advising at that meeting?
Yes, we do.
How many kids are we getting participating?
Well, we've met, but this last time we had two. So since I started participating, I've seen four kids.
Great.
And I'm looking at Counselor Linton, because she also serves.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. I think it's a great resource for our community as well. Other committee reports? Counselor Myers, how about all the people that we're pointing to committees, like getting involved?
We're interviewing and filling up our committee spots.
Yes, that's weird.
We actually have.
When all of us are here.
We actually have more people that are wanting to volunteer, which is outstanding, because normally we're having a tough time filling up our spots, so we're getting more and more people interested in. So even if we get two or three applicants, we say, "Hey, what about this committee instead?" So, and a lot of people are signing up that way.
Yeah, we have an applicant that is being referred to. So, okay. Do your, do your.
All right. I try to do that every single thing I do. All right. I guess I don't think I have anything to talk about tonight, other than it's Roundup Week, and hopefully for those of you that are going to the Roundup, you have a safe week. Please enjoy the events that are happening on the other side of the county and supporting them, just like they've supported us with the Umatilla County Fair, but, so. Other comments from the council? Yes, counsel?
Just that I want to borrow on Kiwanis Kids Day, mention that's a free event for the entire community to come out to, and there'll be loads of activity for your kids. It'll be right at View Park during the AWSO soccer events that'll be going on at the same time, so if you've got a kid in soccer, do that. Same day is also Cork and Barrel down Festival Street. I'll probably keep talking about that until we have the opportunity. I did want to mention that I happened to bump into Aaron Davis, who's the, I don't know what his official title is in regards to the Youth Advisory Council, I know he heads that up, and he's having a meeting with them, I think, this week, and they're planning on being at our first council meeting in October. He talked about some ideas with having people, maybe some that are specific to city councils, some that are specific to maybe Parks and Rec, or sitting on just a few various committees. And he told me also that perhaps one or two of them is interested in actually running for public office, so that's interesting to see that are, that are, want to serve there. I will also just mention that I would like to see more candidates in general run for office, so I applaud the city on making it about as public as we possibly can so that people do. And then just one other comment I want to make in regards to the resolution we're talking about with homelessness is just that we do want to keep our city safe, but I also want to make sure that people are aware that some of the homeless population here actually does need help, and they're not what some might call a career homeless person. So I encourage everyone to support the organizations that do support our homeless population around here, like Eastern Oregon Mission and others, and because there are people that do need help, and one of the best ways that we can help them is by making sure that the resources they take advantage of are also supported.
Mr. Smith, are you working with Mr. Davis already on our youth advisory program?
Yeah, and actually, I was going to give the same report that.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure. Are they the education necessary before they show up for their first council meeting?
Yes, Counselor Brown?
If I may ask, because it's been mentioned twice, so I'm going to mention it again, is it possible, and maybe it's already happening, I have not been on Facebook for my own personal purpose, but is it possible to also include first, the first responders? Because for now, it just says Kiwanis and all of that, but we don't also want to not include the faith and first responders.
Yes, it'll be up later this week, which is final presentation of the marketing materials as far as who's involved in the first responders group so that we can get them properly.
Pretty much.
If it's faith in blue, that kind of identifies.
Faith in first responders.
Either faith in blue, so.
No, it's not faith in blue.
All right.
We're inclusive.
You're inclusive. We want the red guys there, too.
Counselor Lynn?
Ms. DeMores asked a question. He said that on September 3rd, when the phone calls went out for the emergency emergency for the fire that happened, that the calls did not go out to all the phone lines, and I didn't approve, should be contacted to find out about that.
Mr. Morris, oh, you're not talking about somebody here tonight?
No.
You had somebody speak.
Somebody does ask this question.
Got you.
Yeah, so the Umatilla County Emergency Management manages that service that will call you. It's something you have to sign up for, it just doesn't call everybody, you have to sign up for it, and so if you contact that office, they can help you figure it out, or they can help him figure it out.
Now, is Umatilla County?
County Emergency Management.
Any else?
Thank you.
Counselor? Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to report, I went earlier today to, I was in Portland and made a presentation to the University of Oregon Board of Trustees, and the president related to the program we did a couple of years ago with a number of different University of Oregon classes, and so they were presenting about that program to their board and asked that I come and kind of talk about our experience, so appreciated the chance to kind of show them that Hermiston is on the map, and the new president reached, he came up to me after the presentation, said, "I want to come out, and I haven't been to Hermiston yet," so hopefully we can get him to come out here, so. And that's all I have.
Is the president coming out for Roundup?
He didn't say.
They have a letter done at breakfast at Roundup, and sometimes the president shows up for it, so I was going to introduce myself. As a duck, and the mayor of Hermiston. All right, any else?
That's it.
Okay.
Then we are adjourned.